Before you went to the polls, you may have interpreted it that your taxes could go up $4,000. Supporters of remaining in SB two town argue that voters are informed and it's an insult to say they aren't. Voters had the opportunities to be informed as school board meetings deliberative session and information posted online. I've heard the school board should have presented a second option that included school choice. They did have information about cost of other schools, many which cost more than Concord. Yes, they may not have negotiated with those schools, but I understand at least one school does not negotiate tuition. And some schools on that list are a longer drive than to Concord. The vote showed choice without increased cost. So whether I support looking into multi-school agreements or Concord contract, I feel the board did what the voters asked. But I am appalled and saddened by the attacks on the board claiming that you don't listen to or respect taxpayers and parents. Yes, we have freedom of speech, but attacking someone's character is unnecessary. I appreciate the effort of those that try to keep the conversation civil and have called others out on it. The members of the school board are parents and taxpayers in this town. They have chosen to run for this position. They were elected by the voters of Deerfield, some of them more than once. They serve on the board and make decisions with the information they have and try to do what is best for students and taxpayers. I imagine some of my comments will be challenged and I'm okay with that. But I want to thank the board for your hard work and trying to do what's best for the students, families and taxpayers of Deerfield.
Very much. Additional comments? Seeing none, okay. We have a public hearing for septic system. And if I recall correctly, I sent the call to order and you have some numbers for me to deal with, correct? All right, so, so I have to say, yeah. I'm calling to order the public hearing for the septic system. This is to withdraw funds from the facilities. I won't use the right term.
Oh, yeah. We just fixed that, didn't we?
Yeah. Repair, expendable trust fund.
We got the, yeah, we got the exact wording.
Okay. So that project came to a total of, we'll be looking to remove 528,855.69 from the trust. That was for the full replacement of leach system behind the building up in the ball fields. So a little background on that project. System is serviced a number of times a year and during one of the services last year, it was determined it was preparing to fail or in a near state of failure. So we made arrangements to kind of make it through the school year with additional pumping of the septic system so that we can get in place for a project in the summertime. That project involved contracting with the towns engineer, Keisha Nordstrom, or the engineering firm of Keisha Nordstrom, which is a towns engineer, to design a replacement leach system for this facility. This facility has had a number of leach systems over the years. They have failed at a fairly high rate of frequency. Some of that is just due to the site conditions, which have been remedied. Some of that may have been done to sizing and additional loading as time has evolved with the facility. The system that was installed is 20,000 square feet. It's called a butterfly system, so there's two 10,000 square foot fields. The calking done by the engineers required 16,000 feet of leach fields. We have an overage of field that was done to again create a slightly larger system so that we have some additional capacity in it. The project, the leach beds are entirely up in the ball field. So there is a 100 by 200 and say 30 foot cut because of the spacing between the two fields that was done up there. All of the excavation, there was additional excavation that was required because of the construction originally of this facility. The debris and rubble from the blasting where this building is sitting was buried up there and was not buried in any fashion that is typical of normal construction practices. So it had to be remedied at the same time. So that work's been done. The fields have been replaced. They've been online since fall. We also, to ensure a longer duration of durability out of the fields, added an additional tank behind the building, as well as an additional grease trap behind the building. Pumps were replaced. The new names we put in going up to the fields were all replaced. So everything from the building out, outside of the original tank and grease trap, which have been, a redundant system has been added because there's an additional tank and additional grease trap. Everything basically out from there has been replaced. So that's kind of the quick definition of the project and we can answer questions before we wrap up the hearing.
Nick? We changed or we corrected it to school building repair trust fund.
So the fund is the school building repair trust fund. So any questions regarding that or comments? Please, so that we can capture it.
Bobby Ann Dosty Brown Road. Does this 528,000 plus cover also all the times that it had to be pumped? Like every, I know every day it had to be pumped or something.
That was done out of budget, last year's budget.
Oh, cool. Okay, so that's, I'll take care of it. Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments?
Quick question. Will the redesigned system fit the size of the renovations, say, of the plan that you put forth last year?
So septic systems are designed by, not by physical square footage of the facility, but by the number.
Capacity, right.
Right? So it is designed for the building with an overage, but the state doesn't allow you to plug in fictitious numbers. There is the ability to put a third field out there with the infrastructure that's already in place. So if another field needed to be added to increase the capacity, it could be.
Okay. So the billing as proposed last year, say it filled to capacity. You would need to add something else to the system?
You would have to update the plans with the state for approval to obtain.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? Okay, so I believe that concludes, or we don't have any. We can conclude the public hearing?
On the septic, yes.
On the septic. So that concludes the public hearing on the septic. And now we have to have a separate public hearing on the SB two.
Correct.
Okay, so I'm now calling the public hearing for the warrant article number nine, which is
Rescind the.
So just to rescind the provisions of SB two and go back to a traditional town meeting form of government. Basically, we have been a SB two town since 2005. Periodically, we hear from enough people that they yearn for the old days and they wish to go back to town meeting. The only way for that to happen is for question being put on the warrant and for the community to weigh in on that. So this is that process. We have the whole public hearing. And so what I would say is if anybody has any questions or comments regarding that warrant article and or the transition from SB two to town meeting, I'd invite you to ask them now. Nothing?
Could you explain it? I, I, I'm not a witness.
Okay, so, so currently SB two, our current kind of form of local government, the school and the town are independent in it, but we both operate on the same system, is the respective boards develop their budgets and all their warrant articles. And it is then presented to a deliberative session. That deliberative session can modify or change the warrant articles where it's a law by law. And then that is packaged with the election of seats and any other votes that are required by law to be done in March on the ballot. And it is all voted on on the ballot. So that's our current method that you've been a part of since 2005. Town meeting is very much a New England tradition. That is, everybody comes out in February and basically that deliberative session becomes a legislative session. And the legislative body makes decisions, votes on them and basically puts them in force or acts them on that day. So if you were discussing the budget, rather than discussing the budget that's going on the warrant article and the default budget that's going on the warrant article, a budget is presented at the town meeting and it is worked on by the legislative body until it's done. And then so discussions pertaining to anything inside that budget and priorities can then be directed by the legislative body. Basically, the people in the room, they make the decisions and you walk out of the room with a budget.
So it's really the funding. It's not like dissolving this board and combining it with the town.
No, no, it's still separate legal entities. It's just a matter of the process. It was the budget and all the warrant articles. And basically the ballot is for the election of officers and any questions that require it to be placed on the ballot. So contracts would be negotiated still, I believe.
Yep, but they're voted on at town meeting.
They're voted on at town meeting, but your election of board members and all that stuff is done at the ballot. It is one of those things where the question is the town's ability to decide on its own form of self-governance. And so they can decide how they want to govern themselves with this question. It has people who support it and people that don't. It requires a three-fifths vote to pass or to convert back, just as it did to go over. It certainly, neither system is perfect. And they both have their positives and they both have their negatives. It's just a matter of letting the community decide how they want to handle their affairs.
I was gonna say that the current model takes the old town meeting and splits it into two days. So you've got the adjusting what goes on with the warrant and then you've got the voting on the warrant, two separate days. Back in the day, town meeting, everything would happen on the same day. So you would know coming out of the town meeting what the result was, rather than waiting a month to actually get the final.
So you can't go in and just vote real quick like we do now? You have to sit through the whole town meeting to vote on, say, the contract?
Whatever the warrants are on that given year. But it is, um, it has, it's a different participation, I guess. It's a different, it's a different meeting to a certain extent because the legislative body works out their differences during the meeting. It comes to, I believe, a greater sense of compromise across the whole process. But anyhow, so the point of this public hearing is this is part of that process of placing it on the warrant and then letting the town decide in a couple weeks. Additional questions regarding that? Seeing none. I'm going to call the public hearing to a close. Now we've had the public hearings. We need to
Vote to withdraw.
Vote to withdraw. All right, so I would look for a motion to withdraw 528,855.69 from the school building repair trust fund.
Just real quick, can you tell us on the name of the trust fund? I thought it was school building repair and future replacing.
No, the in future replacement was not in the name, it was the purpose.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so, so, all right, so we have a motion. For a second, all right, we have a motion and a second for the withdrawal of the 528,000 change fund. Discussion from the board. All in favor? All right.
Aye.
All right, so that takes care of that item. Chris is just in time. Impeccable.
That was pretty good.
All right, it's almost like you are watching downstairs. So the next item, kind of ties into what we just did, is the awarding of the roofing project for this summer. Chris is gonna talk us through it, the process. Do you want to do the roof first and then we're gonna hit the facilities items after, if that works?
Sure, that sounds good.
Okay?
Okay.
Is Andy?
I think it was just, sorry, Chris.
Andrew, when I'm assuming that's, there was an Andy.
Could you give Chris what Amber intended?
So, so let's.
This is what the board has, what they're getting right now.
Okay.
Is it Andrew's or Andy's? Yeah, it's Andrew.
Okay.
It is.
I'm sure.
Turn him on and we'll just ask him if it works both ways.
Yep.
Andy, are you there?
Yes, I am, hi.
All right, so with Andy being on there, I need to look for motion to allow remote participation.
So move.
Second, all right, that requires a roll call. Jeff?
Yep.
Yes.
Myself, yes, I need to ask Andy. Organize a search party for Andy.
Yep, I'm here, I was able to get unmuted.
All right, Andy, did you hear? I didn't realize you jumped in before we took the vote on the withdrawal of the funds. Were you listening to that or did you jump in late?
Yeah, I heard that discussion.
Okay, if you want to be added to the vote, we'll call it, if that works, or you, are you fine with the four votes?
I'm, I'm fine with the outcome.
Okay, all right, so we'll leave that alone then, if everybody's okay with that? Okay. Andy, we're moving on to the roof and Chris, why don't you lead us through?
Yeah, can I just add one thing that Chris doesn't know yet?
Yes, sorry.
So very late this afternoon, to make the packet, Amber received, just in case you're gonna reference this, Amber received another reference for Therion that was very positive. So I just wanted you to know that came because I know it came late. So just, you can improve that if you want.
Good evening. It was, I was asked to get bids for replacing our 30 and 20-year-old roof. If you look up on our roof currently, we have two different rubber manufacturers, Firestone and Carlisle. Through experience and talking with other people, I decided to investigate more into the Carlisle SynTech roofing system. Through talking with the distributor for Carlisle, I felt that was the best option to go for New England weather and for a long time guarantee and trustworthy product. The bid went out over the last couple weeks. Each individual contractor, I think I had a total of seven contractors come out and meet individually so I could walk the roofing project with them, get their input, get a feel for how they were, what made them a good contractor. We received the six bids were actually turned in or five. Two weeks ago, Amber and myself had a chance to go through, crunch all the numbers, make sure everything was asked, that I was asking for the bid was included in the packages. We put the bids together, we put the pricing together and the top two companies that came in was Therion Company and Weather Guard Industries. Amber has a scoring sheet on contractors when they came in and on the information that they listed. Therion came in with a 48, Weather Guard came in at a 52. They both received good, better than good references from people that were contacted. Therion is a certified roofing contractor with, where's my note? In 2020, excuse me, in 2022, they were awarded the perfection contractor for Carlisle. Looking at the bids, Amber and myself wanted to just concentrate on the top two. I'm just gonna go over this as the all-in package for both contractors. We broke it into first into two parts. One, the standard 20-year warranty. And then we asked the contractors to give us a line item for a 30-year, 30-year warranty on the roof. As a total package, Therion came in at 613,331. Weather Guard came in at?
649 if you're doing the whole.
Yeah, they bid it separately, they bid it differently.
They bid it with the ducks not the ads, wait, yeah, so 649.
I think if you see it, she in red, Chris, she, Therion's number was base shingles and warranty. And then the way Weather Guard did it, it was just base and warranty.
Correct.
So 613,331 for Therion with all the adders.
Correct.
At 649 for what, same package of stuff?
Correct.
So you have a recommendation for us, I presume?
I would recommend Therion as our contractor to do the work.
Okay, so Chris is recommending Therion at 613,331. That includes, and this is a discussion the board needs to have, one of the add-ons that we have included in that project, there's a couple. So we have the add for the drain replacement, that's all the roof penetrations around the perimeter.
Correct.
Okay. We had an add-on for a going from a 20-year roof to a thicker 30-year roof. And then we had the adder for the, I guess it's underlayment, the additional layer of underlayment?
Yes. For to make it solar ready.
To make it solar ready.
Correct, and that is just on the flat roof, that does not include the pitched roof.
Okay, so when we look at that, the base bid without any of the other adders is 387,310. It does not include the lenient Theron's bid, the drain replacement, the upgrade to the 30-year roof and the secure shield. And then the shingle section is, was an additional on their breakout. So when we look at this project, question for the board is, do we want to award it? Do we want to spend the money to go from a 20-year or a 30-year roof? And then do we want to spend the money to make the flat roofs solar ready for a future project? Am I capturing that correctly?
You are.
Okay. Everybody with me so far?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure.
It's confusing.
It's, it isn't, it isn't. So I would say, you know, we're looking at a, you know, if we do it the less expensive way and we kind of cut all the extras with 387, that gives us a 20-year roof that does not make it solar ready. And then basically adding solar at that point becomes jeopardizes the warranty if we don't put the secure shield down.
Correct.
Okay. The secure shield allows for the 30-year warranty to stay intact with a solar array on the roof.
Correct.
And I'm looking to you just to make sure I captured everything correctly. The drain replacement is self-explanatory, that's the solar shield. And then basically the, the big adder is to add that additional 10 years for the thicker metal roof. On their bid was 115,876. That puts another 10 years of warranty on the roof and a thicker membrane. So the question of the discussion is, is that good money to spend? Jeff?
My thought is the cost, you know, cost's constantly increasing. Spending 115,000 now to get an additional 10 years, right? We just got
What it's gonna cost, 20?
Let's look at it as an investment, right? So 20 years and the
A million-dollar project?
Yeah, 6, 700 and 90, right? Drop it on like 10 years. So if we, we look at it as a cost per year, we're actually 10 years. Maybe, you know, buys us 10 more years of time. We can kick the can or we can just invest it now, we've got the money or the fund. I support that. The, the solar add to me is going to hurt if the next board doesn't pursue solar and we spend 50,000 or something that just doesn't happen to me.
Am I correct that we have a year from installation to install the solar regardless of whether or not to put the solar shield on?
Correct, that is correct.
So If that project took a little longer, can we get it resurfaced, do they just re-inspect it and certify it?
Yes, there is, there is a, you gotta pay X amount per square foot for them to come back and recertify your roof.
Okay. So that's, I guess that's part of the process. So I guess let's, let's, if we break it into chunks, why don't we try to do it that way? What's the sense of the board in regards to the 30-year roof, what are talking about that? The upgrade to the 30-year? Anybody? Anybody?
What do we, I'm trying to find our balance on our funds right now. You said we have money, I know that we have, have the money to spend, but, but how much is our paving job we can take out?
That's gonna come out of the paving fund.
You think that'll cover the whole paving job?
I can be an exact answer.
So this will, this will, this and the septic will put a freeze significantly. We talked about it as deliberative, I think we were down under 200K, the projected would be under 200K.
After these, after.
136,000.
That would be done.
And that's with a, that was with an estimated replacement cost of 650,000.
So, let's start around 200. Leave a little extra for the part in line if it goes over beyond that. All right, we gotta break this up. We really need to make an award on this because we need to get on the schedule. So, one more time, 30 years, what do you guys want to do?
I, I think there's pieces to it. I mean, sure, I'm in favor of that idea, but at the same time, Jeff brought up a good question, which is this sort of the next board, wouldn't it make any sense to wait on this whole thing until after the election for the next board to then make the decision about the solar panel and this at the same time?
If we don't award it, I don't think it gets done this summer as well.
We could, I, there's nothing, I'm sure that Therion would not have an issue with us waiting a month on a secure shield answer.
Okay.
So if you guys, I'm not taking part in the vote, but whoever you award to, if you choose to, that's something that, you know, unless it's a eight-month lead time or whatever it is on it, you know, then call an emergency meeting, we have to get an answer sooner. But I would say that you can award it and then say you're withholding, you're holding that option.
Schedule is the big thing. And they're gonna need time to get, they're gonna need to, at a minimum, get the roofing materials on order. And have it here, because we need that to start that project. Again, Jones, Chris?
As soon as the kids are out of the building.
While the buses roll up, roll the roof again.
What's that?
The buses roll out and the roofing rolls in.
And he'll be dropping off material.
Do you, do you have a sense of these two companies if either or both of them would be able to start it in June?
Yes, that was my main topic with everybody. It's, this, this goes June 50. Be ready. We've got plenty of room for a lay-down yard. If they get early deliveries, get them on site. We will take care of it and
We are, that wasn't better than the bid as well as the project.
Yes, yes.
If it helps with the 30-year versus the 20-year, you know, if you look at just the 20-year cost, right? So 387,110 divided by 20 years, that comes out to a cost per year of 19,390. The extra 10 years will then only cost us 11,587 per year. So do you want to look at it as a value?
Just, I did post this question to Beacon, who is the creator of the Scopa Works. And he said a lot of schools are, because of the cost, are buying the 30-year warranty. For that reason, just cost in the additional 10 years as opposed to 20 years in, you know, paying more.
So, we're gonna pursue the 30? Everybody unanimous on that? Andy, how do you feel?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Jeff. I was doing kind of the math, the 10-year gap price per year. And I think that's the way to go. And I think the community has supported solar also, so I would definitely go with the 30.
Yeah, I mean, I'm inclined to, I think, I'm inclined to prep it for solar and just have it ready. I'd be more inclined to award it, I think I'd favor awarding it that way. And if a board in a month wants to revisit that part of it, they can. But my mentality here is, let's get the project ready to go, moving, scheduled. The community was clear last year, they wanted us to make these repairs. And they were, they gave us some money to do it. We are, the roof, the septic, hopefully the next couple of years, we can get the rest of the envelope projects done with some glazing and some other stuff. And then basically we redone the shell to the extent that it can be redone, I'm just not gonna take the risk off. Jeff?
I see a note that says the original bid was not signed deductive points for completeness. I'm assuming they resubmitted a signed bid?
Yes.
Yes. All right, so if we, if we just put a check mark on the 30-year drain replacements, anybody have a question concerned with that or questions for Chris on that? Okay, so we're comfortable with the drain replacements, it seems like a no-brainer. Okay, the shingling on this, this is, the shingling's gonna actually be this roof?
All the roofs, the small gables in the front.
All the pitch roof?
Yes.
Okay. Is that a 30-year product that they'd be using on that?
It's gonna be a certainty, certainty product. I'm not sure what the like, the warranty is on certainty. 20 or 30 years, isn't it, standard?
Warranties on asphalt shingles are really weird on commercial roofs.
Are they?
A lot of specs call for them, but they don't actually offer it. Asphalt's so simple that.
I'll give you a layer of that. All right, so then the next question. All right, so then the next question is, do we want to put the underlayment down and have a solar-ready roof? We, obviously the board as it currently sits has expressed an interest in restoring that project.
I think exactly, she said, I think we should award it, and then if we have to change it in a month?
Deal with it then?
Deal with it then. It will, there'll be, would there be a penalty though if we?
I think if we did it right away, if it was a change of heart.
Chris comes up in the mail when he talks to them.
I can.
I'm guessing our contract allows us to make adjustments to it, in the sense it's been lied on, I don't, Amber could put a contract together that allow us to make additions or deductions.
Yeah. So I would just, I would just, if we decide to go that route, I would have a note in the P O that final commitment on the secure shield, I would write the deal with it, and just tell the final bid will be the whole for first. That gives us election meeting, yeah, that'll work.
That makes the most sense.
Okay, so then I will, in an effort to progress this conversation, I will make a motion to award the roof replacement project to Theron Company in the amount of six hundred thirteen thousand, three hundred thirty-one dollars, that would be the whole package with the upgraded roof membranes and prepping for the future solar.
So.
I made a motion.
Oh, second. I'm motioning again.
It's two seconds, all right. Additional discussion on the motion? All right, roll call, Jeff, you're standing, correct?
Correct.
Kendra?
Uh, yes.
Myself, you guys, Nate. Andy, where are you?
Yes, I.
Okay, so that is four, zero, one. Chris, work with Amber and get that one done. Okay, what else? We had a couple of other facilities related.
Yes.
Updates.
I put together a tentative capital project schedule that goes out to twenty twenty-six. Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, I've got to add parking lot. We should be having big documents by the end of this month. I also added.
Do we have that, that list?
I, maybe.
Okay, all right, talk, talk us through it, go.
Okay, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, fire alarm upgrade, which is continuing, which should wrap up this summer. Roof replacement, gable lens vinyl siding replacement, home lane security project, that's not really a capital project, but it is on my plate, so I just wanted to put it out there. Parking lot, start, not start solar, but continue on solar project. Twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, solar project, start unit ventilators. Twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, replace unit ventilators, start window replacement. Twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty, twenty-six, replace windows.
All right.
Is that the sheet that Trish was gonna produce that was already getting worked on? Is that the same sheet or is that a new sheet? Did you develop that?
Yes, I did, just like a couple of days ago.
Oh, okay, just share it with me.
Yeah.
Just share it with me and I'll get it to these guys.
Okay, sorry about that.
I just wanted to make sure I knew what sheet it was, thank you.
So what, what that does is, what we should really do, Chris, is the next time we talk, have that sheet, review it, because if we want to kind of continue working with that plan, we want to always try to be seeding a budget cycle ahead. So this year's projects, next year's projects should be seeded this year into these appropriate funds, so that the money is there and waiting for when the kids bolt, so that we can be ready to crack anything. I think it also makes it easier to discuss the funds when you say the next round of projects is gonna be X. And we need approximately X to get it going. Everybody comfortable with kind of what Chris ran down there as far as, I mean, that, that completes the envelope?
Seems like a lot of work.
It is a tremendous amount of work, and it's all stuff that was identified before, we're just working our way to kind of down from the top down basically, in this particular case.
How do we go about, and when do we go about updating the C I P?
With the town?
Planning board. It's been a couple of years since we.
It's been like.
And they reached out to say that they were gonna update some chapters, but we never heard back.
They were supposed, the, the planning board was supposed to kind of get stakeholders together. I think we actually, I think that.
It was gonna be me.
That was you.
Got emailed.
And the planning board.
Either I fell off email or something.
Well, the beauty is, is hopefully we have a set of plans for that parking lot, and we're gonna just invite the planning board members here, we can ask them that. Because that is part of that process for us prior to putting that project up to bid, is inviting the conservation commission and the planning board and having a roundtable. So that would be a good opportunity for us to kind of.
Are there any impact fees left?
We use, no, those have been consumed.
Every year they're.
They're built, so there may be some built back into it. There's been a fair bit of development going on in town, so there is money building back into that fund. All right, any additional questions for Chris? Chris, any additional questions for us?
No.
Why don't you go home?
I've got one question though.
I just said question, you said no.
Well, I thought.
No, they're all used up.
I know. We have a compressor down in the boiler room.
I put the picture in tonight.
Yes.
The guy was in the back.
That probably dates back to the beginning of the school. Compressor was, the intention of the compressor was to activate the rubers in the air, in the unit ventilators. We've gone with the upgrade in two thousand twelve with Honeywell, we moved to an electrical or mechanical actuator that does that for us, so I have this very big compressor picking up space.
In today?
That one, so right there.
That compressor right there?
Yes. I reached out to the city and they just happened to buy a brand-new one prior to me letting people know that that was.
So, the town actually just put out a list for some surplus items. I can't remember what. It was an old Ford Ranger, I think, that they've had and some other stuff.
I think the state does a surplus.
White Farm does a surplus auctions. You just want it out of the way.
I just want the space, yes.
Valuable real estate. What are our options for disposing of it? Is it functional or is it dead?
It was there when I got here. I mean, there might be life to it, how much? I don't know.
So what are our options for disposing of it?
You can put out an advertisement to give equal opportunities to anyone that wants it, and you can set your price. If there was no life and no value, it could be disposed of, but if it's, I don't know.
This is one of those things, I don't want to spend any money to find out it's not worth anything.
Right. The key with public property is giving equal access to it.
So, do we just want to put something out, just a surplus, and anybody who's taking, provide us with a price and we'll, we'll.
An auction out?
Kind of like, can't be donated to the scrap mill.
I don't know, I'm not taking any responsibility for what condition this is in, because I know nothing about this.
Well, that's, that's exactly it. I don't know if the compressor CD stop, I don't know if the motors are CD stop, it doesn't look like it's been plugged into anything for the kids.
Two thousand twelve, when we went mechanical.
I don't want to plug it in anywhere.
How big is this thing, like six feet long?
Yeah.
Same and a half by.
No, it's probably about almost six feet long.
It looks, I think it's gonna be a liability getting out of the building, that's, even if you give it to someone, they're, you know, paperwork, they damaged the building, it hurt.
And we probably need something in writing that we're not responsible for, and that has to them as a result of taking said compressor.
So here's my thought process on this. If the board is comfortable with it being disposed of, why don't we allow Chris Patty to develop the way that it gets rid of, and then you can just tell us how it's going to work? Is that what we want to do? I don't want it.
I will, how about this, I will talk to Amber and make sure that we dispose of it in such a way that there's no liability to the district.
Perfect, everybody comfortable with that? All in favor?
Aye.
Does that need to add to motions? No, okay, we're good, all right. Anything else, Chris?
That is it.
No other pictures or, or anything else?
Not at this time.
I put that in there, and Ashley all of a sudden was checking the drive and said, there's a picture of something in the drive? I put that in there, no worries.
All right. Okay, so that wraps up our time with Chris, so I would use this as an opportunity to escape.
I will, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, so next up, we have Q and A on the Concord contract. So, the intent of this really is, we've got some, obviously some people here, it's just to answer questions regarding the contract with Concord. This is a subject that there are strong feelings about in the community on both sides, so I certainly want this to be questions directed to the board, so that we can answer them. It's gonna be informal to that extent. I'm gonna ask this not be a campaign stop for anybody running for any offices, so please, if you have questions, just ask questions. Obviously, there has been information put out in the community representing one perspective. The board is here to answer the questions in regards to our process, the reasoning, and why we have chosen to do what we have done. So with that being said, we are proposing a extension to a certain extent, or a renewal of our existing contract with Concord. Provide a little bit of what we can do here. That contract will have a twelve-year period where we are fully permitted to the City of Concord for high school education. That would make Concord High School our high school. At the end of twelve years, at the discretion of either board, the contract could be reopened, renegotiated, or exited, depending, again, on the discretion of the communities and the boards at that time. The contract guarantees placement for, or the proposed contract will guarantee placement for every single one of our students. It also allows us to plan and forecast tuition rates amongst a number of other things, the formula has been modified from the existing contract. So the capital fee has been removed, and the rate that we receive from Concord is what is effectively the same cost they incur to educate a Concord High School student. So it is a remarkably fair deal for us, because we should not expect to pay less than they pay in the City of Concord, that would be an unreasonable expectation, I believe, on our behalf. And I think it's very reasonable for them, and fair for them to say, pay us what it costs us to educate one of our own kids, so I think that's a fair and reasonable contract all the way around. That being said, there's been discussion about some of the process involved in decisions, and I would open the floor to anybody that has questions. Come on up, ask questions, we'll field through your questions, and like to give everybody an opportunity to ask questions before we kind of cycle back through a round, unless it's a kind of a follow-up type of question to your first one. But anybody that has questions, please, come on up, let us know who you are, and fire away. Anyone? Yeah. Kick it off, Nancy.
Hey. I wish I was still teaching, it was quieter then.
You just roll out during the day.
I guess I have a question about tuition rate, and it, I don't know if you can tell, like, how is it decided each year? Do we have any idea how much it might go up each year, so if we're not gonna get nailed with all of a sudden it went up ten thousand dollars? The other thing that kind of goes together, you said something about the capital gains?
Capital fee.
Capital fee, sorry.
Capital gains, is that being paid in your taxes?
Do, I guess I have a question, do all schools charge that? Like, is that, and, because I don't, I guess I don't really understand it, I look at it as it's a savings for us if Concord doesn't charge it, but I wondered, like, if our, we contracted with Oyster River, is that something that Oyster River might charge, or whoever?
So, I think, I think there's a big thing to identify first, is you have contracts, and then you have tuition agreements. So a tuition agreement is a, a short-term agreement, effectively. And it is where you just agree to pay a tuition rate to send a child to a school. Or, may I have that wrong? Okay. And so those are pretty cut and dry, so we can go to a school and say, what is your tuition rate, and they can give us a number, and that would be the number we pay for a regular education student. What the contract does, and the tuition rates aren't necessarily reflective of their cost, it's a rate set by the board in that district. Or, however they're legally taxed.
Which may include an increase or an overhead padding, if you will, what you want to call it.
Like a.
Capital fee.
Like a capital fee, there, there can be costs embedded into how they calculate, but there is no set formula for calculating a tuition. So, the way our formula is calculated in the contract, if we reference the exact language, okay? I just wanted to make sure I used the right info, so for us, our tuition rate will be calculated by taking the total Concord High School expenditures for the most recently completed school year, as reported by the Concord School District, not the state, once the O E twenty-five financial report, and subtracting the total high school special education expenditures, the high school regular and special education transportation expenditures, and then that net amount is then multiplied by the average of the last five years of high school expenditure increases, I'll explain this all in a second. The net amount will then be divided by the high school's average daily membership, as reported by Concord, not the state, to determine the per-student tuition rate. So effectively, they're taking their cost for gen ed students, dividing it by the total number of students, and then because.
Including Deerfield students.
Including Deerfields. Because the reporting is always a year behind, you have to have some sort of formula to equalize it. So that is where that last five years, the average of the last five years have increased, so if the average of the last five years has been three percent, whatever the number is, it's that cost, that number, plus the three percent, and that is what our rate is. That average is done as the equalizer, because the formula is always, or the numbers are always a year behind.
Yeah.
So that's intended to equalize everything out. If they see an increase in cost, that will affect the average for a short period of time, but it will also disappear quickly, if their, if the cost stays static, it stays static. To predict the rates, we don't necessarily have to predict rates into the future, but we do know that the first year of the agreement, which is twenty-four, twenty-five, our rate will be the same as the twenty-three, twenty-four budgeted amount without the capital fee, so we have our twenty-three, twenty-four tuition rate, which we can pull up, and we know what the capital rate was this last year. A little over five hundred bucks a student. We have a hundred and seventy students-ish, I can't remember these exact numbers. So it's a, it's a reasonable savings right out of gate, and then a very, would be a very consistent kind of tuitioning forward and forth.
And that language is different from the current contract expiring, only in changing that five-year window is an update from, currently it's a ten-year window, so it's not as accurate from Congress' perspective, so getting a five-year window increases the accuracy of the current year that we're paying.
Well, we, we are effectively paying what they, the cost they incur.
That's why I asked, because I read it. I'll see if others, I have one other question, but I'm gonna see if there's other questions we can ask.
Anybody else?
So on the five-year versus ten-year, it seems to me that with the rate of increases going so high lately with COVID, right, we've all seen the inflation and everything, budgets going up because of it, that that five-year look back instead of ten, while it might be more accurate, is actually gonna hurt us financially, do you, what's your thought on that? That's a concern for me, because if, I think if you look at the last five years increases as opposed to prior to that, we've seen such increases in prices and everything because of COVID, that that, that's not actually gonna help us financially. I think it might be more accurate, I agree.
I certainly see an increased level of accuracy in, in that rate. Hurting us financially, it, it hits, it, it's gonna hit and dissipate quicker, so in the long run, you'd have to really map it out, but in the long run, I don't see that impact being negative, I think it's gonna wash out to a certain extent, but it hits us a little earlier and it dissipates, so if. But it hits us a little earlier and it dissipates significantly faster. So that spike isn't carrying, in effect, in that trend over a 10-year period.
I think the important thing to keep in mind is that through the negotiations, it was a give and take on both sides. And we had things we wanted to get rid of, such as the capital fee. And while it was a party to the negotiations, I certainly got feedback from them. And we looked at all of these points and, you know, no good negotiation ends with one side getting everything they want. So recognizing that it presents an accurate tuition rate, and also, you know, was something that was on the table for negotiations, helped us with other areas such as eliminating that very expensive capital. I think that's important. Looking at the finished product, it started to, you know, realize all of those nuances that went in through that negotiation. If I really like that correctly.
Yes.
So that's just a comment I had. So one of my main concerns with the contract overall is the length of it. And that you, is it correct in my reading of it that there's, there's no way to manage an increase in tuition until at least the 12-year mark?
The first time the contract would be eligible to be reopened would be at the 12-year mark.
Okay. Do you have concerns about that tuition escalating because of, well, for any reason, but in particular because public school enrollment is declining? Budgets are increasing. It's more expensive to run anything now than it ever has been post-COVID. And I have grave concerns about that with no cost control mechanism in it. So I'm just, I would like your thoughts on that because it seems to, school choice completely aside, right? Say this contract goes. As a taxpayer, I just have some concerns that we can't revisit any of this for 12 years. And that if we see a decline in enrollment and if budgets keep increasing, tuition is going up.
I think to your point there, and I've seen that somewhere else and thought about that a lot. And I think the response.
Is it on the Instagram?
Would it have been Facebook?
I don't think Jeff's on Facebook.
You're a smart man.
I, I, I thought of that and that might be the reality that we're living in. I think we're going to see that throughout New Hampshire, though. And so to.
It's not isolated in that vacuum in Concord.
No, and 100% it is not. We're seeing that decline in enrollment across public schools. People are choosing other things, whatever it is, whether it's private, whether it's homeschool, whether it's macro schools, whether it's V and X, whether it's, you know, online schooling in total. People are doing other things since COVID hit and they've readjusted. So I, I'm not saying it's Concord at all. This is not anything about Concord, it's just a public school.
So I think the question that I throw back on that, if we're, if we're thinking about that as a greater subject, is that impact, whether it's in Concord or anywhere else, is going to impact us no matter what, right? So whether we have students at Oyster River and in Durham, enrollment's declining, and now, as an, analogously, across the state, it's going to impact the cost to educate across the state, regardless of where our students are placed. So the best way for us to insulate ourselves from that is to have a formula that brings us to that kind of cost basis. So although their cost basis may increase to an extent, like every other school's would, at least our rates are dedicated on that cost basis. As opposed to if we had different structures to the agreements. To which, say if we had two or three tuition agreements or we had two or three contracts that were structured differently, maybe the formula and the calculations were different, that, and I could see it being more of a case necessarily one of the scenarios than another. But the boards may be trying to make up some of the money in the lost, the, the budget through their tuition agreements as opposed to through their regular budget lines.
If I could just follow up with, I didn't quite finish what I was trying to say. So I, I think we'd see that across the state. And I think the challenge, going back to the first question on the five-year versus 10-year, comes down to the nuances of negotiation. So let's go back to the square one and say, all right, we're negotiating anew. Trying to negotiate and make a decision based on that point is going to be extremely difficult to come up, not in, in a short-term solution, but we know we need a long-term solution for Deerfield families. Otherwise, we'll be at this in a year, five years, you know? We've been down this road so many times. So trying to pair that valid concern, but also with the reality of needing a long-term solution, knowing that if declining enrollment is going to cause tuition to increase. I, I think it's a, it's a good hypothetical question. But the reality and the mechanics of it in trying to negotiate a long-term solution for Deer, for Deerfield students is, is a very, very complicated thing, in my opinion.
Because of tuition agreements, if that's what, we went there short-term and we constantly subjected to the market forces.
Yeah. So I mean, at no point are you going to pay less than cost anywhere. Taxpayers in any given community aren't going to allow less than cost.
No, I, I mean, I, I haven't.
Right, so I mean.
Said that you should.
Right. I'd love to.
I would never, who, who would expect that?
I love it. But I mean, the, the reality is, is you're not going to pay less than cost. So what I, what, what the contract does is it basically locks us at the cost. Now, if that cost fluctuates, it certainly can. But it shouldn't fluctuate any differently than it would across any other district across the state. If enrollment is down 5% across the state, is down 5%, it's going to have an impact on every district. So it is, it's an interesting hypothetical mathematical problem to try to sort out. But I don't know that there is a solution to the mathematical equation.
Have we actually seen, I, I feel like I did see this at some point, I don't remember. Has there been a decline in students at Concord? Or has it been fairly flat?
No, they've been declining enrollment. I haven't looked, I haven't done a graph, sure, recently, but they've definitely had declining enrollment. Most people have.
COVID had an impact on enrollment as well. But we have seen, at least in our own case, we saw a blip and a, a dip and a blip. How it plays out in another couple of years, I guess it still has to be determined. Obviously, people need to have kids for schools to have students, so.
Someone must just have one. That's enough.
It's all.
Thank you. I'm contributing to that, I think.
We have additional, additional questions. We certainly have, there's no timeline on this. So, I mean, I want to just field any questions. No, we're, that's not part of the citizens' comment. Go ahead.
The prior contract had, and I don't see it in this, so I'm asking. There was a 1,900, I don't think, I wouldn't call it a limit, but there's this, that 1,900-student kind of cap that Concord used to have. And if we, it's, if we went over that, which we did the first few years of the first part of the 20 contract, there was an extra fee associated with that.
Yes, the original, so it was struck from the original.
Yeah.
Contract.
So I'm, I guess I'm just wondering, one, if it was negotiated on purpose, great. I would assume Concord's probably not expecting to reach like that cap like they were in the early 2000s where all the schools were. But I guess, I guess my question is if it was struck on purpose or if it just got left out, it'd be something.
It was struck. It was struck. And it was part of, part of those nuances in the give and takes in the contract.
So we wouldn't be at, I guess, at a risk for any additional cost if they ended up overcap or, or kicking students out or anything like that?
Additional firing away. Anybody?
You made it up.
Out of the comfy chair. Swatch and old wear sitting in now.
I'll be fine. I have not monetary questions. I was curious if part of the negotiations, did you approach Concord and say, if we send fewer, like, I know it's always been a 90% kind of percentage for the number of students sent. Did you approach them to send fewer than 90%?
Produced, we pursued a number of scenarios with them that changed that language.
Okay.
Had to weigh out the factors of those changes. Probably what, three or four different kind of variations of how to amend that, while still being cognizant of the costs and the direction we got from the voters on how they wanted us to handle that. But that certainly was a huge part of the process and probably extended that process out a few months.
Yep.
Yeah.
And, and not just, I mean, part of those scenarios, let's say that it wasn't a 90%, let's say it was an 80%. You know, I think that probably that could have been considered. Probably there'd be some sort of a change in the tuition rate to go along with that.
That was my next question.
But from our side as a board, who is that 20%? Who, does that mean returning to the days of the lottery? Like, you win the big prize, only 20% of you win the big prize, but not everybody. So now it becomes this thing where some, there's like these winners and losers. Is that the right way to be thinking about where an eighth grader is going to high school for the next four years?
That's.
You're, you're the loser, you get to go to Concord, you're the winner, you get to go to somewhere else.
And that's what it felt like years ago when my daughters were in middle school year. There was a lottery when they were here. And.
We pulled away from the lottery around the time I joined the board, right? 16, maybe, 15, 16?
It was, I saw it in like 24.
It was right around the time when we, I think, were redoing, yeah, yeah, 14-ish.
The year before Paige was in eighth grade, actually, my oldest daughter. The year before she was in eighth grade, that might have been the last lottery year. I'm not positive.
And there, there's certainly, there's, there's, there's people in this community that went through that process. Jeff, look what happened.
Stuck here.
He's sitting here. So there's, you know, there's, for those of us that grew up in town that are my age, Jeff's age, Kim was here, I believe.
We're the bus, we're all going, let's go.
Yeah, yeah.
Don't worry, you're a driver, it'll be okay.
I think we may have all, I, I didn't go in the same place as you guys, but packed up and sent to Manchester. But we, there was, there was a lot of negative to that system. It created a lot of friction in the community amongst families. To a certain extent, sometimes even siblings were being separated. You know, certainly there, there's a commitment, I think, that this board made in this process to guarantee a placement for all of our kids. And that was one of our hard points in this process, was ensuring that every child had a place, had the place. We have from day one, I think, acknowledged that the concern that a lot of parents have is vacationing at Concord High School. Depending on which corner of this town you live in, it can be, you know, a ride. But when we look at, you know, the information, that starts to kind of play out depending on the direction you're going, somebody has a longer ride than somebody else.
Can I chime in about the ride?
Sure.
There have been a lot of comments about kids riding the bus for an hour and a half plus to get to Concord. The kids aren't actually on the bus until 7:30. The buses arrive in Concord, I can only say this, having been a bus driver, and the Concord bus drivers all have to sign off on the bus radios. CHS 1 is clear, CHS 2 is clear. So.
Change like Maverick and.
Yeah, like, and then they tell you whatever town they're going to next, just so the dispatch knows who's en route to where. They are all signed off by 7:10, 7:12, at least as of three years ago when I was still driving. They're all signed off by 7:10, 7:12. My son, who's at Concord now, says he's at school by like 10 after 7:00.
And I think, I think what, part of that, to that extent, part of that process is those buses aren't our buses for the entire day.
Correct.
They're our buses for a run.
Correct.
And then they immediately turn around and, and boot scoot to.
Turn and burn.
Another kid.
Somewhere else.
To do it all over again.
Yes.
So for Deerfield, high school transportation is probably always likely to involve those early runs because we have to get them out of town and back to the community those buses have to run in.
There are clubs, some sports practices before school hours. Teachers are available for extra help or for, like, retesting on things. Like, there's just things that are going on before school that sometimes it's.
Great time to do your homework.
Yeah, you know, Freddy gets a lot of work done before school. Just speaking for my own kid, he doesn't have to do it at home after a basketball game or after a practice. It's beneficial to a student to have that time. They can go get breakfast in the cab, they can goof around with their friends. He does plenty of that, too. You know my kid? But I'm just saying, like, they're not on, like, it sounds like your kid's getting on the bus at 6 o'clock or 5 or 6 or whatever and not getting to school until 7:30 when class is stopped. But that's not the case. That was just the two cents of that.
And I don't know how to talk about negotiations, but I do want to make very clear to Tina's question about, did we look at a lower than 90% rate? And aside from the, who's going to do that 20%? There was very clearly, like, you know, an increase rate for the lower percentage. So I don't want to, I don't think we were completely clear about that. It was not the same rate if we went by a lower percentage.
And that, and, and we, we're, we're clear to talk about it at this point. A lower percentage or no percentage resulted in a increase in cost. A substantial increase in cost. Which, again, when we as a board have to look back upon the feedback that we solicited and received from the community, there was a fairly clear direction from the majority of people that day, that they did not want to incur a cost.
Absolutely, I'm one of those people. I'm, I don't care where anybody else wants to send me a kid. I don't want it to cost us more money than it needs to. And I also don't want to see us involved in lawsuits that don't need to happen because of inequitable, or whatever it's called, situation. Like, I just want to see us.
Everybody has.
And satisfy what we are.
So we, when it became apparent that that path was going to give us a significant increase in cost, we decided to pursue a commitment and a savings to the taxpayers, which is what we were able to do. That took some time to kind of sort out. We, we also have a huge portion of this community that their kids have either gone through the school, they're retired, they're on fixed incomes, and they are part of the electorate as well. We have the responsibility to represent them as much as everybody else.
Absolutely.
So it's a, it's a difficult act to balance. I mean, I've been sitting here long enough to know that you can't make everybody happy. And you have to make the decisions that I believe best are, are best for the community as a whole. And that's not ever popular in the clear.
And I have one last question, then it'll be somebody else's turn. Get your crystal ball out. If the Concord contract.
It's in my truck, can I run out and get it?
Sure. If the Concord contract fails, and I guess the choice, the choice article was made advisory, correct?
In the end, it was, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So that's not necessarily a definite either, it's not binding. But if the Concord contract fails, do you, what happens to the kids who are already at Concord? I guess I want to know. I have a kid at Concord, what happens?
So we have another year in our contract, which is why the board acted in advance of the expiration of the contract.
Yes.
Negotiating when you're acting against the law is not a position to be in. The students we have there would be continued, could be allowed to continue through. So our enrolled students at contract, in Concord, continuous Concord students.
Probably siblings, but also, I mean, a parent could, could.
I mean, you'd have to work it out with Concord, but typically, they're going to let people cycle through.
Absent a contract, I guess, to answer your question, absent a contract, what happens? Abs- absent a contract, I guess the, to answer your question, absent a contract, what happens? Um, you know, next year, so this contract fails next year. A different solution is put before the voters. If this voters don't support that solution, it's back to.
Back to twenty years ago.
And it's gonna be. Um, really a matter of negotiating individual agreements with individual schools.
So when my son's a junior in high school, I could be looking at, is Concord still going to keep them here?
No, the the kids that are there would.
They would be able to say.
They would finish.
But the tuition rate for your son.
The tuition rate for your son may change.
Do you want me to read the whole section here?
Yep.
Um, no further Deerfield students would enter the freshman year beginning in the year following the effective date of termination. But Deerfield sophomores, juniors and seniors enrolled during that year would continue until graduation under the same terms. That govern the contract prior to the effective date of termination. So.
So we'd.
They would, but it doesn't mention siblings, it just says no further migrants would enter Concord.
So we would cycle our kids out and then.
Once it ends.
Or your uncle in that case.
Yeah, it's the terms prior to the date of termination. So if it terminates and we don't have any contract, then the tuition rate, we don't know.
Yeah.
Well, we could certainly seek a tuition agreement with Concord, um, you know.
But you can no longer have any bargaining power at that point.
Yeah, and and certainly, you know, there's this, uh, you know, we use this, this, this term school of record, right? Which um, is what guarantees our placement. Um, and so there is, and I think, you know, we, we've defined, and I went and found, I wanted to make sure I had the right information. So one ninety-four twenty-two is actually what defines, they don't use the term school of record, but it is a school maintained by the district. So if you look at one ninety-four twenty-two, it's any school district, you make a contract with an academy, a high school or other literary institution located in this. Or wind distance or transportation facilities, because this was very clear to the listeners. So these make it necessary in another state, raise an appropriate money to carry the contract into effect. Contract is approved by the state board. Uh, the school with which it is made shall be deemed a high school maintained by the district. So because of our contract, Concord is our high school. As if it was inside Deerfield's, you know, um, town lines. Um, that's what guarantee, that, that is what guarantees all of our students a placement. So absent a contract, you cannot guarantee every single student's placement. And again, that was really a hard stop for us as a board because we can't leave kids behind. But it just wasn't, wasn't.
Um, the other, I think, uncertainty that starts to creep in is that if we, if this fails, then, then. Starting in November, we need to be budgeting for the following year. And if we know that the contract's gonna be expiring at the end of twenty-four and we start budgeting for twenty-four, twenty-five. This November, then if it fails in March, November, we need to start budgeting for costs to go up because we need to pay kids tuition.
So would kids have to.
I don't know how we're gonna do it, but we're gonna start probably seeing increases in the tuition line. Maybe that'll be along with cuts to the transportation line because you need a budget to pass the town.
Yeah.
And if we don't know that stuff, then probably we're gonna start.
And those increases don't, because they're not contractual, don't carry through default. So if we end up in a perpetual state of default, those increases. Then we run the risk of those increases affecting the operations here because we have to pay the bill for the high school. So if we budget two million dollars, two million dollars for the high school. And we're in default, eventually, which seems to be happening in this town more than I would hope. But we're in default and we have a two and a half million dollar bill for high school. We're paying the two and a half million, so now we're finding and trying to address a half a million dollar shortfall in the regular ed budget. And that's where it's coming from. And, you know, that creates an interesting circumstance. Do you create and build a trust fund and try to pad it with the enough money to absorb those lips and dips? Um, there's no good way to do it, you budget for what you anticipate, but. Budget needs to pass, that's part of that factor.
And the last thing would be that this year's rising eighth graders, if it fails, would not know where they're going the following year. So those eighth graders start to deal with, where am I going in the fall? And maybe that means applying to whatever schools you wanna go to. And you know, I don't know whether any transportation is gonna go there, but you're gonna have to start, each eighth grade family's gonna have to start dealing with this question of, I don't know.
And I think, I think something to kind of just weigh into that is, you know, we hear top off agreements, top off agreements, top off agreements. It sounds wonderful in theory, right? Now, as a board, we've been advised not to do it. Other districts in the state that have been doing it stopped. There's districts that do it. I'm not there, I'm not taking their advice from their legal counsel, that's their decision. The concern becomes, if you do it, and then it is deemed that it can't be done. But you've already peeled the banana.
Yeah.
Can't, can't put the banana back in the peel once it's been peeled. The party's over. So now, you're again exposing yourself to occurring those costs.
The damages for a lawsuit like that, if we lost in court, right? Let's say someone sued us, I suspect a court would say, you're not allowed to do this. You have to pay every family back for the amounts that they paid for their school. So if someone took their money, went to Phillips Exeter, and the court said. This was not constitutional, you were not fulfilling your obligation to provide fair and appropriate education, you shifted the burden to the parents. Fair and appropriate. Then the court could say, you gotta pay the families back for any amount that they paid for. Tuition, transportation, et cetera.
So it.
So it could be.
Awesome.
A lot.
Um, and and that, to that extent. The reason why, at the deliberative on Saturday, I inserted the words public in the Warren Article eleven. Was as a potential insulator because public schools all carry a relatively similar cost. And it would eliminate the potential exposure to the district of footing the bill for a Dairy Field or Phillips.
Yeah.
Or some of those schools. And I, you know, I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that if we ended up in a model that made the town responsible for paying. For school choice in private schools. I'm not saying it would be manipulated, but I certainly think there are people that are savvy enough to say. I want to send my kid to Dairy Field for four years, I'm gonna buy a house in Deerfield, declare it as my residence. And sell the moment they graduate. But it certainly is something that we need to. Ensure we don't end up in that situation, which is why I inserted words public, which there's been people discussed and, you know. But that was to insulate the town and the district from that potential circumstance. So that if we do end up paying for choice, we limit our exposure to public schools, public schools carry. A relatively similar cost, there isn't a sixty thousand dollar public school in the state that I'm aware of, or forty thousand or five thousand dollar public school that I'm aware of. And that's why.
It wasn't you that did it, it was the legislative body that did it.
Yes, I'm sorry, I made the motion, the legislative body, the majority in the legislative body acted. I think we have another.
We do, I'm sorry.
Pyromy can cycle back through. And and folks, I appreciate this.
I just needed to stand up.
Oh.
Sorry, I'm on the table.
No, I, I'm just getting numb.
Aren't these chairs super comfortable?
Uh, yeah.
They're just lovely.
Becoming one with them. I'm Bobby Ann Dossi Brown Road. Um, can you clarify, because I've heard a lot of different voices? And I don't know what to believe. So the current contract is ninety percent to Concord. If you do have hardship manifest, all that jazz with more than ten percent. Um, you still have to pay ninety percent, correct?
We did not have that conversation. I I don't know, I know you're looking at me though. We didn't have that conversation with them, so I don't know.
We haven't been in a situation where we manifest, where those students have approached that ten percent mark.
Okay, and then my question is kind of, because I've listened to you guys for a long time, um, you.
Sorry.
No, it's cool. Um, Nate keeps saying. Oh, I lose and I go to Concord, I win and I go somewhere else. When you know that your community. You spent money on surveys, you spent money for U N H surveys. And that survey came back, you took tax dollars to take a survey of your town, and that survey came back and said Co Brown was. Number one for all these people, plus you add another survey where you ranked your schools. One through ten, I think it was, or one through seven, and Co Brown was number one. And then there was number two, number three, and number four was Concord. These are off your website, this is off S A U website. Why would you not, I get that cost is very important in this town. But I also understand that you spent money on a survey with the money from the taxpayers. Why would you not give Co Brown an option?
So that, you want it or?
You need to, because, because you keep saying.
Because I've been talking too much?
No, because he keeps saying, like, you, he literally just said, you lose and you go to Concord, you win and you go.
I think that's a, well, go ahead.
Um, a couple of things to correct in your statement. One is that U N H survey you're talking about came in two thousand nine, which was. I was not.
Twenty twenty-one, it says on the website. Sure.
Thank you. So that's correcting one statement. The other survey you're referring to was a survey that I think you're referring to is the one that was done online via. You know, an email address or through Google Forms, I'm not exactly sure which, but I don't remember, I was involved in that, I don't remember which platform we used to do that. Um, the difference and the reason that the board, I can't, I wasn't on the board, but I believe the difference and the reason that the money was spent on that is for sample size. So any sort of a survey, I'm sure you know that.
Yeah, oh yeah, I come to the.
Yeah, the U N H survey, money was spent to increase the sample size of the responses, right? When we ran that one, um, a couple of years ago, we tried to get it to as many people as we could. We tried to maximize the number of responses and we did not, I'm sure you saw it, did not get any responses. And so the problem with looking at that data and drawing the conclusions that you're drawing. Is because the people who did answer that, unfortunately, don't necessarily represent the largest body in town. So if you look at that, there was not a lot of responses. Who were the people who probably took the time to respond to that? Where are some people who were more passionate like yourself about doing something other than Concord, right? People who are happy with it, unfortunately, don't, we don't always get the most response from that. So we as a board are in a situation where, yes, we can either pay money to U N H to try to increase the sample size and get a larger, more robust set of results. Or we can go through the ballot, the warrant, when we get twelve hundred results, which is a significant sample size. But short of those steps, it's difficult for us to get really solid results from a survey. So you are citing data, but I don't know that it's the strongest data to cite.
And I would certainly add, so part of that, um, one of those data points. The, the U N H information two thousand nine is, is dated, it was, was an action of a different board. Um, but certainly, obtain data for the sentiments in town at that point. Um, that other presentation that you referenced, which was put together by the High School Option Subcommittee that we. Um, empowered to kind of, to sort of, some of the legwork. In that same presentation is the largest sample size we've received, which is the data from twenty twenty-four articles. Um, so in that, that subcommittee says, you know, Co Brown is ranked number one when they weighted everything. But we still have to then reconcile that against the community saying, we like the idea of choice. We don't want to pay for it. And that, those two questions were placed on the ballot specifically to help us figure out the sentiment of the community. And so when we look at that, that twenty twenty data sample, we know Co Brown's tuition, right? It's fixed, there's no negotiation, you pay the rate, whatever number that is.
And there is no capital P, it's the rate is the rate.
The rate is the rate, and we know the rate is at that time in twenty twenty, at that moment, that that snapshot time was approximately a four thousand dollar difference. Which is why the Warren Articles were in that way, because we've heard, we like the option Co Brown, we like the option Co Brown. But Co Brown at the time, at that time of four thousand dollar increase, say it was two hundred students, it's a little less.
Warren article, did it say four thousand per, per high school student? Or did it say per?
It said per student.
It said per, no, I think it, I think it said, we can hold it. Yeah, it's definitely find it while we're talking. But that, that was crafted to give us direction. Because I've sat here long enough to know that soliciting feedback from the community and getting it is very difficult. And typically, when we get it, it's close, it's, it's in January, February, March. Suddenly everyone's like, oh, what have they been doing all year long? And for a lot of people, they kind of jump in and they tune in real quick. By the time we get to January, February, March, the, the things that we're talking about is the work that we've already been, you know, we've been doing groundwork for. Six months, a year, two years, to kind of get to that point. And we've been, no, we, we ask for and try to solicit feedback throughout these processes, you know. And it's, it's difficult to get feedback from the community. Everybody is very busy, they have a lot going on. I mean, I know that I see my house Saturday morning and Sunday morning, it feels like otherwise I'm walking in to go to bed and I'm leaving to go to work. Or pr- or practice for the kids and all this other stuff. Um, so I certainly understand that everybody's got a lot going on. So we have to try to get the largest data sample we can. And in this particular community, best opportunity we have to gather data from the largest. Prosection of the community is on the ballot. And so.
So, I don't want you to go too far too quick. Um, so that was my other question, is you've taken all these surveys and. I actually thought you were involved with it because when you were elected, you wanted choice and you also wanted choice too.
I have been forthright to say I was, I, I was sitting right about where Tina is and I was spitting fire.
So.
But I've spent eight years knowing what I now know.
Okay, but you had all those years and you did take all that data and there's. There's some feeling of, oh no, they're not gonna know where they're going. Um, but why wouldn't you have done this a year before when you had all that data and when you. I, I think that the, the fear that you're instilling, it's, it's not that. Like, I was, personally, I was doing that anyway because that was not an option. Like, what you're providing wasn't even an option, so. Why did you not do this a year ago and give you a little more time, knowing that you're a major? How about half? Let's just say half your community wants choice, including two of you that are on, there's five people on the board. Two of you wanted choice originally, so that's like, okay, I don't have to take a survey to know that maybe half wants choice. Why wouldn't you, like, offer at least one choice option?
So.
Two contracts.
It's a, so it's a fair question, but let me elaborate a little bit differently. Nearly a decade ago, I sat in Tina's chair and I was mad as hell. Now, I was mad as hell looking at it from thirty thousand feet going, ah, and I was a cranky, cranky old man. Over the course of the last eight years, as I have gathered a much more robust, thorough understanding. Of public education, what we are required to do and what we have to do, as well as a much better understanding of what Concord is. I have started to realize that they present a phenomenal opportunity for our kids while still actively. Preserving some of the interest in tax, the, the, the financial interest in taxpayers. As a parent and as a board member, I don't always get to vote, and I'll speak for myself here in this regard. I don't always get to vote as Zach Langlois, a board member, the same way Zach Langlois, a parent in the audience would vote. Because as a parent, I am going to vote strictly based on what I want for my child. And as a board member, I have to vote on what I believe is the best for all of the children.
One hundred percent.
As well as all of the other shareholders, which are the, the people in this community. And I believe that's a fair assessment for me to say that the rest of the board would agree with.
Yeah, I, I still want choice, I would love to have a school choice model.
Yeah.
But our job as a, like, the board is to get something that the taxpayers will improve on. That will meet the needs of the students in this town, all students in this town. And, you know, that's our job. And so what I want for my kids, what I think would be ideal, is not always what we get to vote for.
I, I, I agree with that one hundred percent.
For me publicly, my wife works next door to Pinkerton. Pinkerton would be great, drop the kids off on your way there, bring them home on your way home. However.
In West River, I could take my kids to work with.
Right, so, but however, that's our best interest and not the community's best interest. And we're not elected to serve our best interests, we're elected to serve the community's.
So the main goal of a board and, and as a superintendent is your academic achievement of your, of your students. And this, I mean, Miss Withy and the staff here is above and beyond most. Case, or, you know, pre-K through eight schools, public schools. Um, I, I'm having a hard time. I, I'm having a hard time wrapping my brain around the, the budget for kids in this school is on average like more than nineteen thousand. But we keep like capping off our high school kids and it feels like coming at it from a board member, like your, you guys are board members, that would be your number one priority is academic achievement and continuing the, the core values that this place instills in them.
When you do that calculation, you're not using the same formula used in high schools? You.
There's two per pupil costs in the state. If you look at the DOE, there's a high school per pupil cost and the, and the elementary schools.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at like the past budget that you just.
Oh, yeah. And you, the DOE breaks it up because the cost per pupil is always different at high schools. So elementary schools have a different cost per pupil. So there'll be K eight costs per pupils and then all the high schools in state.
And our tuition is predicated on no special education, no transportation. That's the Concord formula.
Yeah.
No special education costs, no transportation costs. So your, your, your formula is different.
Ah, okay.
So when you look at it, now if you just take our budget and you divide it by the number of students in here, it, it's inclusive of, of the needs of all of our students. And I didn't write the formula in your math. I don't know if you backed up the high school students when you made that, that formula.
I'm looking at, well, that doesn't make sense either.
DOE website is the place to look because that tells you.
I'm looking at your budget.
Yeah, look at the DOE website because that tells you every state, every school in the state, what their cost per pupil is.
Right, because the budget has high school transportation.
I'll look at it later. I was just like, it's more, okay. Just knowing the, the ranking in academic success. Yeah, I think things are just not adding up. And I know you've heard that. I know you've heard that a million times. I, I think over a year and a half ago, Whitmore got up, or sorry, not, no names, people, people got up.
He certainly has a name.
He does, he does. And I got up here, everybody gets up here and says, why are you choosing a lower ranked school? And then also it, it hurts as a community member to hear things said by our board that you've never heard any issues at Concord. When you have surveys on your website stating otherwise, and I know I've already said this, but how do you defend what you're saying at a public forum? How do you defend saying, I've never heard of any issues at our current contracted school when you have a survey on your website saying otherwise?
Our job is to, is to focus on the factors and if you look through the minutes and the few, the various conversations that the high school committee had addressed a lot of these ideas. But there are a lot of issues that happen in high school. I can remember a few issues that happened when I was in high school that probably if my parents are filling out a survey, maybe you have some of these as well. I think that happens in high schools across the country. I don't think you're going to find a school like for instance, Co Brown, or you, I don't know that you're claiming this, but you think every student has a fabulous experience of four years in Co Brown without, you know, there are some instances of, of, of these events that happen. So our job is to look at the big picture and recognize that things happen in high school and as best we possibly can, you don't, you don't want them to. But to, to pick one event and, and yes, a parent's comment or a note, we try to look at the big picture. There are some, some tragic things that happen. And when we hear of them and when we hear, we don't hear of things that Superintendent Sherman hears about. That's what the, the policy is about, removing students if necessary to other schools because things happen regardless of what high school we are going to be contracting with. And so you're right, there is a comment or a couple of comments out there, but we can't. We, we're, we're trying to look at the big picture and we're trying to think about.
I think Jeff.
It's not, you know.
What do you think?
Yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
Yeah, the answer to your original question was.
This was the Warren article.
Up to four thousand dollars per student per year.
It's hard. I like per student. I don't know. I, I know you say that we're, we're.
So the question was pertaining to high school, being the question to high school. I don't know how else we could have written that to be any more clear. Four thousand dollars per student per year.
So you know how, you know how with your expansion Warren article, you put it per thou, like your taxes were up this month.
We put estimated tax rates.
Yeah, why didn't you do that?
Estimating tax rates vary from year to year. So currently the town's assessed values about seven hundred and ninety dollars, which means seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars in spending equates to about a dollar per thousand. Doesn't take into the revenue side of the equation. However, that is, it's a little less than seven hundred and eighty, seventy, what were, seven seventy something. But anyhow, so you know, at the time, I think that would have made it more confusing because you didn't know the number of students. So that is a pretty plain and simple. It's four thousand dollars per head. I think, I mean, we, we also, we discussed the, how we were going to craft those, those articles. I mean, Nate and I were the only ones here at that time, right? You weren't here yet, were you Jeff? No, so Nate and I were here and the board at that point spent quite a bit of time discussing how we were going to craft those articles and reviewing them with legal and making sure that they were as clear as they could be. And I, I think we tried to keep them as simple and germane as we could in an effort to really solicit that most honest feedback from the community. Sorry, Jeff.
Yeah, I, I think. I mean, a lot of this, we could go around in circles all night.
That was my last.
Good evening, this. So I just want to say that, you know, it's really hard. It's been, it's my last meeting. It's been a wonderful three. It is. But to constantly be.
Well, we need to thank you at the end of this.
Yeah. No, but to be the, you know, the, the focus of so much frustration and criticism from this town for decisions we make when we, you know, that there's malintent in any of these decisions. It's going to be really interesting to see how Warren our board goes. Because we sit here and spend so many hours, you, you know, you know, it's, it's, we sit here and we try to make the best decisions we can based on the data we have. And a really, really important factor to keep in mind is that parents may want school choice, but we get that sample size on voting day of all those voters who said they didn't support it. We could.
They supported choice.
We, they also said.
Thousand dollars.
Right, I'm not, the important thing to keep in mind that, and I made my decision was that a family of two, if you have two kids, you're costing this town somewhere between forty thousand to thirty seven thousand dollars a year to send those two kids. You have tax bill in Deerfield, property tax sixty to eight thousand, of which seventy percent goes to the school. So while parents have this choice and desire and they see their tax dollars and want to see, they're really not paying to educate their kids. All the other people in this community help to support those kids. And that's what we have to look at is all of our citizens who are supplementing, because my tax bill isn't coming even close to funding my kids' education. And so at the end of the day, we made the best decision as a board, how I felt personally and what this town wanted. Maybe they'll come out in an absolute trounce for our board and it will go down in flames and we'll be back to the drawing board.
They won't, but it's your decision.
Yeah, and, and that's, I think that's the thing, you know, we all have, have, you know, had this discussion ad nauseam, but.
Jeff, this is nothing, I know, this is nothing personal.
Oh, I know that.
This is like, no, dude. Yeah, like. I understand that you get a lot of things on the interwebs, right? I get it, but they're gonna be, no matter what.
Say that, yes, thank you for saying that.
Like, I'm, I know I'm annoying, but like, there are other people that feel this way and it's, it's a conversation. And I know it gets heated, but that's how good things happen. Communication is how things happen.
This has really been the most constructive, I feel, conversation that's been had regarding this topic, right?
There is no hate. It's just, everybody wants, you have a kid.
I, I can detach from emotion. I can have a conversation about anything absent emotion. I make decisions absent emotion. And if it's a big decision and I feel like there's emotion attached to it, I don't make the decision until I can make it absent emotion. I'm having this conversation with everybody absent emotion. Because.
I can feel the hurt. I feel his exhaustion.
Jeff, Jeff may be a little more emotional than I am at times.
Somebody's exhausted.
However, however, I have no problem just relegating it to being absent emotion and I look at it from a pragmatic standpoint. This conversation is the conversation the community should be having regarding the subject, right? The conversations that occur elsewhere aren't necessarily I feel as constructive as this one is because this is, this is a group of citizens with an honest concern, asking honest you know, questions, being respectful and informative. And, and you're asking us real questions and we're giving you the real answers. So I mean, this, this is the way that this discourse is supposed to occur, I believe, in the community. And so I, I appreciate this because this is a way for us to solicit some feedback from, from community members. And I, you know, this is what I, you know, I encourage, but it's, obviously it's difficult to get. You know, I would have loved to have had forty or fifty people sitting here tonight when we came in. I even broke my own cardinal rule and Facebooked for a few minutes today and put some stuff on the community page and one of the other ones, which as, as, as sure many of you know, I don't Facebook ever at all unless it's like.
How you broke feedback in.
Sorry, I got Tina here.
I'll get up for some, I'm listening still, but I just wanted.
I'm glad you're still listening. Anybody else have questions?
I have one more. You'll be able to.
It's.
Before the Jeff Kelly roast begins.
Well, before we. Before we roast Jeff Kelly, let me just say I have more fanfare at my last meeting last year than Jeff got tonight. So thank you, Jeff. It's a service.
For some reason.
Do we not have one?
We have one beginning of March.
No, we don't. It's during vacations. Oh.
I'm calling another meeting. One of the privileges of being chair is I can call a meeting with twenty-four hours notice. I'm sorry.
That's okay. And then my last question is if for any reason you're in this, I, I know the length of the contract is concerning to some people. If we're in this contract for this length of time, for any reason, something happened, something that you guys, the next board, whoever's sitting here during that term decides that's unacceptable, we're pulling our kids out, we're finding another arrangement for them, is there, what is the penalty? Because I know it's in the contract, but it's honestly too long to read. I'm sure there's a penalty to withdraw early.
So Patty's going to dive in here real quick, but our commitment is, is really as important.
But if something catastrophic happens that you felt was unacceptable?
We, we don't have to.
And termination for cause.
Yeah, we can terminate for cause.
Seems like the only cause listed is if the school district fails to maintain its status as an approved high school.
Right.
So say that happens.
And then you have four years. See, when you have three or four.
Does it still have two years to correct a deficiency? If they fail to correct within two years, do you feel have the option of sending a notice of intent to terminate?
So, you know, our commitment, now we have history with Concord, obviously.
Yeah.
Twenty years ago. You know, we can, we can call a meeting with Concord's board. And Concord's board is certainly, I think, been agreeable to working with us. And I think one of the things that we recognized kind of early into this process is that we wanted to create more engagement between our students here and the students at Concord. And that was something that we talked about as part of that process and really incorporating because it is our high school. It's our high school in Concord, but it's our high school. Really working to incorporate our students into Concord as part of that community and inviting them in sooner, more often, earlier in a variety of different ways. And I think we, regardless of the outcome of the, of the negotiations, we kind of all agreed that that was something we're going to start working with anyway. So, you know, is there an ECO? No, that's, that's the commitment. It's kind of like a marriage, right? We're in it. We're going to be in it.
I don't want to give Fred four years though.
Yeah. But, you know, obviously we have the ability to address Concord's board and vice versa in the event that we were dissatisfied or something.
And then if you do decide that, you know, the.
If it's me, I'll go in absent emotion, absent of emotion and just.
Devote, yes.
I will say clause number fifteen modification also says that, I mean, it says the opposite of this, but basically it says that modifications can be made in writing if signed by both parties to the contract. So I don't know the scope of what modifications can be made, but I think we could argue that if we could get something in writing from them, we could modify.
And no monetary penalty.
Doesn't say it means it doesn't exist in my world.
Okay, thank you.
I'll step forward for just a quick, a couple of quick questions. Ed Cross. So pardon my ignorance if I don't, if you already answered some of the questions, I did come in late.
Missed all the fun.
Yeah, so my, my first question is, how much conversation and when did you start any conversation with, as far as the board goes, on even considering choice?
Well, we started back in twenty twenty. Ultimately, it was when we first started reviewing and looking at what the community's interest was back in twenty twenty when we put that first ballot question.
And I realize it was back then, so let me just modify my question a little bit more so that it's more pertinent to the particular timeframe that we're working right now. In the past three years, how much work or talk has been on the board level about school choice?
The board spent months trying to negotiate a contract that would have opened up more options.
And in negotiating these, this contract, how many different schools did you, have you set any groundwork on negotiating?
We met with Co Brown and we met with Concord and then the superintendent spoke to all the other schools who identified with the subcommittee.
And what was the timeframe that those negotiations had happened?
Over the course of the last year. Plus winters, winter, even.
Yeah, year and a half.
Okay. So part of, I think, some of the challenges with, you know, some of the things I've read or people I've talked to is this school here, our elementary school system is very good, you know, and I'll attest to that. I did a wonderful job with, by my own daughter Emma, who had some challenges. You know, they did a great job. And so I don't question the ability of this particular school in holding the bar high. And so that our expectations as parents have a high bar. Okay, so when I look at some of the challenges and the statistics that I see and read about what you're picking for the only option, that bar is brought, okay, in my personal opinion, from where we're at, where we're now going to. And so that's a little disappointing, okay? Whether I choose to use that school or not, just me looking at that statistical drop is, you know, concerning. And so I can see why there's a lot of people who are concerned. Because it seems to me that the focus is dollars over educational quality. That's what it sounds like because I just keep hearing it's all about the money. Okay, so, and I know that you have a responsibility to all the taxpayers and you're trying to weigh all that out in, in light of the cost overall and who has the responsibility and who wants to pay for it. But the rhetoric that I'm seeing and, and what I'm hearing and the statistics that I see, they just don't kind of come together when we're talking the highest possible education and quality versus while we're looking at the low dollar or the, or the the lowest end user number. So happy to hear your comments and, and I'll apologize if you already asked or had these questions asked and I wasn't here.
This is a new one. It's a fresh one.
So I think, I'll start by answering it as wearing both hats at once, which is, I support the contract, but I'm also a parent that has the best interest of my child at heart. And as a board member, I'm fully comfortable making the decision because of the academic opportunities at Concord in the fiscal perspective. And as a parent, I can say that I fully endorse it and comfortable sending my child in, knowing that she will get an excellent education if she's willing to apply herself. Having attended Co Brown personally, I saw kids that did amazingly. I went to school with kids that got kicked out and failed out. I think that the logic I applied to the situation was as you progress into adulthood and towards adulthood, it becomes more incumbent on the student to take their future into their own hands. And the opportunities presented at Concord, it's a bigger school, it's not the same apples-to-apples population as Co Brown. And the opportunities are absolutely present and available for all the students who want to achieve and reach academic success. So that's an anecdotal way to answer your question, but that was the logic I applied to it.
We, part of what Zach was talking about earlier is that having been on the board for X years and being involved in meetings with all of these different schools, we, we have a different just perspective as being on the board. And I hear what you're saying about as a parent and as a community, when you look at Co Brown or you look at Concord, your perspective is, is more limited because what you get is, is either it was on the state website or some sort of a ranking website where essentially Co Brown, all that it offers, or Concord, all that it offers is boiled down to like the number, maybe it's a few numbers. And this was a conversation that the, that the subcommittee had when we were discussing, how do you evaluate schools? And something that came up at the deliberative session is that, is that, and you just alluded to it as well, Jeff, that Co Brown is not a public high school. Co Brown is a private academy. It's a public academy technically speaking. But what that does mean is that when you look at the number that, that is like simplified, simplify Co Brown out of one number, where does that number come from? It comes from the fact that students who don't apply themselves or whatever do get kicked out of Co Brown. And so there is, there's a piece of the academics there where, where students who are either up to the bar or don't have family support at home or don't X, Y, or Z fit the mold, that's not the right term, but they don't have to, there's no obligation on the part of Co Brown to keep those students, to educate those students. It's not a public high school, whereas Concord is. Concord has, it's one of the, one of the multiple towns in the state that is accepting new Americans. The number of immigrants that are actually being resettled in Concord is substantial. Does that impact the test scores? Does that impact how you boil Concord down to a number? It certainly does. And so is Northwood experiencing that same influx of, of new Americans? No. And so those numbers, just, you know, on that, like one sort of point are going to be significantly different because of that. This was sort of one piece of the conversation. Yeah, how do you look at a school and all that it offers and evaluate? And what are the factors that we choose to evaluate a school on? And it's not an easy question, but as a parent, you're limited in kind of seeing, you know, what, what you see. But there's a lot behind those numbers that just don't convey.
And, and to kind of add to what Nate's saying, they are, they are not score equally, but they're also, the data is not equal, right? And so if you look behind, and this is all, it's information's available on the state's website if you look at their data. So if you look at the state's data, you look at all of the data from a much broader perspective, there is a significant difference in Concord and Northwood. So when I look at the datas and I look at a school, I look at school, I've been looking at school data for years now. It's very easy to look at one number, you kind of look at the thirty thousand foot number, but when you dive in and you see the level of diversity, the level of English as a second or a third language students, you see the, the fact that there is a drastic difference in the special education populations in Concord versus Co Brown, if we're using that as an example, because that's the one we most commonly hear. All of that information, when you aggregate it together, will have an impact on an average, you know, proficiency score. So I certainly, it's, it's a, it's a valid question. It's, it's absolutely, it's a great question. It's a valid question. I just think it is very difficult to weigh them. If you took the top twenty percent of students from any high school in the state, you rank them against the top twenty percent of students from any high school in the state, you're going to find a bunch of remarkable performers. But that is one subsection. And to Jeff's extent, I think your kids, our kids will thrive in any environment if they are kids that are going to thrive. And I think the kids that are not going to thrive will have a harder time in any environment. I think Concord brings forward some additional opportunities that Co Brown doesn't.
And supports.
And supports for those kids to get them through that high school experience. I think they, I think they have a more robust mechanism for helping those kids.
So. So sometimes, sometimes we have to look at what perceptions that are actually there and actually put some weight to it because perception does make people's decisions. Okay, so you can explain them to the micro of why you're okay with those bad numbers, but the perception and the population isn't going to understand it with those micro numbers. Okay, so you have, you know, you have a tough battle if you're going to argue the case of your, your, your micro numbers so that it gives you a feeling of accomplishment that this is why this is at least a better than what it looks like school. So that's one thing that you have to deal with and that's just a fact. Okay, and we know that because that's the way our culture's designed. Perception right now with media and everything else tends to rule the direction. Whoever talks the most and the loudest is the ones that get believed the most. So with that being said, the challenges that I think, you know, on the negotiating side is has the board considered negotiating that ten percent number to a bigger number that could be allowed to go other places? And if you have done that, what do those numbers look like and are they opportunities for us to see?
So this may, this part of the conversation may have occurred before we came in. So we spent a significant amount of time with Concord trying to reduce that number. And we looked at the scenarios involving reducing that number, eliminating that number, changing percentage of that number in a variety of fashions. Unfortunately, they all came with a cost.
I would assume so.
If you're a businessman, you understand it. Okay, so they all came with a cost. And when we tried to reconcile that cost against the clear directive we got from the community regarding the cost of choice, we could not find a balance that allowed us to reconcile them together. So the community said, we like the idea of choice, we do not want to pay for it. Well, unfortunately, the problem we run into is if we're guaranteeing a placement for our kids, we are having a contract with the high school which ensures all of our students have a placement, one hundred percent regardless of any other circumstance. If we're doing that and we want to open that to create choice, it comes with cost. And the community was very clear, choice without cost. The board was not willing to leave a student standing at the end of the driveway at the end of eighth grade without a placement. So we had positions we couldn't move on, which was potentially not placing students. And we had a director from the community, which was, we do not want to incur costs if this choice model works, but we spent months trying to find a solution that would get us some level of flex, a greater level of flexibility without incurring cost. None of those circumstances were palatable financially.
So I realized that, you know, it probably came with a, a higher tuition cost if you reduce the number, the percentage number to a smaller number. My question was straight out, what was that number? How did it look? What is the difference? And in relationship to, you're boasting on the one fact of choice, the Co Brown is up to four thousand dollars. Concord's here. Well, what was, or was there no opportunity for middle ground? And what did that look like? And did you ask the community if maybe four thousand was too much, but if it was, well said, seventy-five percent of our students and it's going to raise our tuition by a thousand dollars more, did we have any discussions that you can share with me on something like that?
The point to that, what we run into, if it was still maintain some level of cap, so you use seventy-five percent, so we use that number. So a bunch of eighth grade students are graduating. We've now opened it up to seventy, twenty-five percent are allotted an ability to go elsewhere. What that looks like is relevant for the sake of the conversation. How do you determine which twenty-five percent access that?
Well, that's my next question.
And a level of fairness and equitability. So we, we tried the lottery thing. Community did the lottery thing for approximately ten years. That created conflict in the community. It created, it wasn't a good, it wasn't a good situation for, for our town. You had friends competing with each other for positions in a high school. You had winners and losers in this lottery, right? Regardless of placement, but you would just have winners and losers. That's not a good look for us, I, I feel as a community. I feel it's not equitable to our kids to say, some of you, if you win the lottery and you get the Golden Ticket, can go elsewhere, but some of you can't, which is why the policy and the mechanism was changed years ago to make it for the reassignment to be tied to hardship or the manifest educational hardship of investing interest in a child.
Which, which in either case seems one very much more challenging than the other, as we know.
It is.
But it is still completely underutilized even with the ten percent.
It is, we see about a five percent.
Right.
Mathematically about five percent utilization. There is a standard that applies for that policy to take place.
And they must be pretty stringent standards because we're not utilizing the full ten percent.
It is an application of a set of standards that Patty is probably.
It's, and I wouldn't say it's the stringency of the policy. There was a year when I didn't get any requests for anyone to go to another school.
Has the school board considered any type of education on what those standards and how you would meet those standards to qualify to be part of that ten percent?
I think we have certainly discussed it publicly. Have we offered education on it? No, we haven't. We discussed their policies every so often. Yeah, but in a couple of years, recycles every couple of years in policy, because policies percolate back up as Concord changes things.
So then let's talk about the perception of leaving our kids out on the sidewalk. That is not a good perception because it's not reality. And it's not reality because the numbers show that something like that is more likely not to be the case because of the open enrollment in so many schools that are around our area. So again, the perception is that you're boasting on something that isn't reality. That's my opinion. Now, despite whether or not I think school choice is good or not, I personally do think it's good or not. I mean, it's, it's better for parents to have the ability to make those choices. I think the school has some chances or some ways of being able to potentially look at that, but I'm, I'm going to be the first to admit that I haven't been involved. And realistically, all of this talk isn't going to be affecting me because I won't have kids in the school at that point. So I'm not here boasting or trying to promote something for my own benefit, not. There is absolutely zero benefit to Ed Cross for this, by the time, if it goes down this road, even becomes available for us to use. Okay, so I don't come with that. And I wanted to make sure the board understood that. I'm not somebody here boasting so that I can send my kid someplace else. Okay. We have seven children. We have three in high school right now. I have four already graduating or adults. I've been through all of this before as far as choices go and the hard choices that parents have to make. And maybe I have the ability to make choices that some, unfortunately, that not everybody has the ability to make. So I'm here more from a parental rights standpoint than anything else. I think it would be a good opportunity for the school board to consider the effects of parental rights and how it can be for them to pick educational processes that work for their particular child. In my case, I did that and I even utilized the school here who did a wonderful job because that fit my child to what she needed and it fit very well. Okay. Choice without a cost is probably not completely possible unless you cap it. And I do think that there is a bit, ability to cap it despite what your council says. I do not think, and I could be wrong, but I do not think that any school that has been capping tuition has been challenged. I do not think so. But you might know better than I. And so if in fact it's being utilized and it hasn't been challenged, then I would assume using the experience that we already have in front of us, that would weigh heavier than an opinion. Factual versus opinion. So I personally think you should look at the factual, it's never been challenged. So therefore you should be weighing more heavily on that side versus an opinion on something that's never happened at this point in the state of New Hampshire.
So let me, let me jump in again. Just about like the legal process. I'm not the board's lawyer, but I am a lawyer. And most of my job is at a hospital trying to prevent lawsuits, right? So we do policies, we set up all these things to try to not get sued.
Hospitals get sued a lot?
We do get sued a lot. It happens. But there's a few things that I want to say. So in order to file a lawsuit, you need a lot of things. And one of those things is a lot of money to pay a lawyer, right? So make, because this hasn't been challenged, that doesn't mean that everyone is happy with it. That doesn't mean someone in Deerville couldn't afford a lawyer to do this, right? So there, we can't judge it. Like when something happens at the hospital, right? There's a tendency to say, that person's never going to sue us. They're not going to be able to figure out how to navigate the legal system. They're not going to be able to afford a lawyer, et cetera. Maybe we shouldn't deal with it. My response to that is always, it shouldn't matter if someone can access a lawyer and access the legal system. We need to look at it holistically and see, you know, based on our experience, based on how the courts act and based on other lawsuits that we've seen, what, what's the best situation here? And to the other point of like, there hasn't been a lawsuit yet. A lot of my world revolves in things that haven't been lawsuits yet, but there is potential for a lawsuit. So let's say, we're in a hospital, so I'm going to use this as an example. Let's say someone comes up to you and says, let's get rid of the pharmacist because we don't need him. We can just have a robot there making everything. There's not like a lawsuit from the state of New Hampshire where the pharmacist was replaced by a robot and there's like a particular case on point, right, that I can say, no, there was a lawsuit about this. We shouldn't do it because of that. Part of being a lawyer and giving people advice and counsel is looking at what you think is more likely to happen. So even if there isn't an exact lawsuit, you can look at things and say, because of X, Y, and Z, and because of how the court is going to treat X, Y, and Z, it is not advisable to do this. You're weighing the risks and the benefits always. And our counsel, I wasn't part of this conversation, I have no idea what they said, but our counsel felt that the risk outweighed the benefit.
And, and I can appreciate coming from that perspective, but I also know that I sat in another meeting with a very prominent lawyer who says the opposite. The risk isn't there.
Well, with all due respect to that attorney, he's, the Department of Education is also involved in a big lawsuit right now about their funding of education vouchers, which I don't know if he signed off on it. I don't know if he was involved, but the department is currently being sued for whether or not their funding is constitutional. So he may have looked at it and said, the risk outweighs the benefit here. I don't know what advice he gave, but I'm not, you know, I'm not going to criticize him or his advice, but, you know, they are also being sued. So I don't, I don't know how to balance those things.
And I, and I can appreciate that. And the only reason I said that, and this will be my final, and I'll go, is that it's two lawyers with two different opinions that are opposite. It is simply opinions. So we only have history that we can look at as citizens of what hasn't happened. So two lawyers, two different opinions, and that, I'll leave with just an opinion.
But to, to kind of add to that, you know, we, we seek, as a board, we seek legal counsel, right, on a number of matters because Kendra happens to be an attorney. I have many things. An attorney is not one of them. So when we go and seek counsel, we seek that counsel in an effort to protect the school as well as the community and the taxpayers. So in the event that we said in the future, we will do top-off agreements and we, we unpeel the banana and a lawsuit somewhere else bubbles up and it's determined that that can't be done, we can't. we can't undo that easily. So now we're immediately obligating ourselves to pay for all of those students that were participating potentially in a top off agreement somewhere else and incurring that cost. That can also equate to a significant spike in cost depending upon the language that the town used to enable that practice, right? So if we say we are gonna do a big picture, we're gonna allow top off agreements at any school. And we walk away and we do it, two years goes by, everything's great. And somewhere we find that can't be done. Well, now we're on, there's an obligation. We're not paying the figure of say $15,000. Now we're paying the 20, 25, 30. It could be less in some schools, absolutely. And there are schools that are less money, but there are a lot of schools that are a lot more money. And we have to look at the information provided to us by our legal counsel. We have to look at the potential outcomes if we don't heed their advice in the long-term picture and how that plays out for our community. When it comes to, as a, as a personal thought process on top off agreements, as a parent, doesn't bother me one bit. I can, I can afford it, right? Some of us can, some of us can't. So a top off agreement creates an opportunity for me that isn't necessarily created for everybody.
And not necessarily every year. Things could change for you.
Right, and not necessarily every year, right? And that for me is something, again, I'm not comfortable with putting the taxpayers in that situation. And again, that's me, I'm a member of the board, there's five of us that make these decisions. But I have a hard time creating a circumstance that benefits some people that can't benefit everybody. If you want choice, we should pay for choice. If you want, and that's really the directive we need from the community, right? Is if you, if, if you want it, we need to pay for it as a whole because we have to pay for, for our special educations to them because we can't, they're covered. So now not only are we saying, if we were to do a top off agreement, well, we're gonna do top off agreements, but it's only gonna apply to this certain group of students and only, and only if they can afford the difference. And then it, it, it just creates this, this quagmire of stuff. And I certainly understand there's people that support the concept of it. I understand that there was people speaking in town where you go in support of that. I would just counter that, that group was balanced, that group was presenting a very specific opinion to support a position. And it was not a balanced group of panelists representing every aspect of it. Like any situation, if you wanna have a panel of people to support something, you go find those people, you line them up and off you go. I certainly respect the positions they hold within the state. But you know, I don't think that they present the be all end all. And I think that some of the recommendations were, were made create a legal bit of jeopardy for us as a district that I feel is an obligation of the board to try to prevent us from getting into.
So, and I can appreciate that you have that opinion. And I'm not gonna say that you're wrong to have your opinion. I'm looking at it from a historical standpoint of what I've seen or haven't seen. Okay, to make that clear. But it also seems to be very apparent that the option of choice outside of any one school by the board's, what I'm hearing by the board's discussion is that it will never be an option because you need to use the lowest common denominator cost is the way it's coming across. And that's a perception that is out there.
Yep.
Okay? And so it's real from a perception standpoint. And it just seems that if you're always gonna go back to the one survey that says, yeah, we want choice, but we don't wanna pay. And then you say, okay, so that's why we have to go this way because we have to pick the lowest number. That's the way it's coming across. And again, this doesn't really affect me.
Right.
You know, but I'm telling you, this is, was a public opportunity to voice out an opinion of what we see happening. And this is my opinion based on my conversations with the people that I'm friends with, but more within my own household and my son's house and our own look at what we see and hear. That's what it appears in because it just seems to go to a bottom line number is what it feels like. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Stacy? Welcome back.
I know we all wanna get out of here. I just.
I cleared my whole schedule tonight. I recorded all the TV shows.
Starting to twitch. I don't wanna hold him, jeopardize his mental health forever.
His hair wasn't gray three years ago.
Sure it was not.
I'm not even joking.
I just have a couple of comments on, on all, just kind of across the board, the things that we've discussed. And I would like to start or finish with this, but I'd like to start by saying that I, I have said this at several school board meetings since I've started coming. And it is that I 100% believe that all of you are acting in the best interest of the kids in this community. I would never assign any malintent to anyone sitting on this board. We may disagree on the path forward, but I do respect the work that you all put in and the time that you give to this board and our community. So I wanted to start by saying that I believe, I feel wholeheartedly. The cost was for not including the 90% on the contract. I think you had indicated it was about $1,000, maybe $1,500 more.
No, I think the overall impact, there was a budget committee meeting we talked about. The overall impact would be, I think I said 10 to 15%. That was of the overall budget because it also creates a couple of other circumstances that come into play. You know, a probably looking somewhere just on a regular student or 22, 2500, I think is where we got. There was a couple of different scenarios that played out. One of them was paying for a minimum number of students no matter what. Basically, they said, okay, we'll do, we won't have it, but you have to pay for X amount of students. So it played in very differently with a variety of different ways. We never pinned down an exact number because none of them were held.
Okay, so I thought that I had heard $1,000 to $1,500 more per student. But that's not correct.
I'd have to find where that data, where that source was as far as, we talked in the budget committee meeting about it having a 10 to 15% impact on the budget.
Okay. It was you at a school board meeting, but I may have.
I say else. I run my mouth at time. Without emotion.
I wanna speak as well to some of the statements that are, well, what if everybody decides that they wanna go to Co Brown? So if we're looking at where parents decide to send their kids and none of them or a majority of them don't want to send them to Concord and they want to send them somewhere else, I think that says something to us, to you as a school board. And I appreciate very much your focus on cost and not putting the town in jeopardy from a legal perspective because you have both of those obligations. But if our families aren't going to want to send to Concord and if given choice, you think they're all gonna go somewhere else, I think we have to acknowledge that and deal with it. And so to kind of be like, well, you're, you're gonna go to Concord. And I know a lot of you wanna go somewhere else, but you know, we're gonna send you here. That to me says something. And, and so if we wanna talk about giving choice and Concord being the best school and we're afraid to give choice because it might cost us a lot of money, it's not gonna cost us a lot of money if Concord is the place that everybody wants to go. It's only gonna cost us a lot of money if people don't wanna go to Concord. And again, I just, I just think that needs to be a, a big part of the conversation because I'm concerned that if that's not the school that everybody wants to send their kids to.
So I, so we don't know what school everybody wants to send their kids to, right? We've heard from people that don't wanna send their kids here. We've heard of people that wanna send their kids here. But when you look at data set, I don't have 1,500 people saying, I wanna send my kids to Raymond, Raymond High School or Manchester Central or to any other school, right? So we don't have that number. You know, if you applied a, if, if you opened it and say it's a $2,000 increase at Concord and then you look at the increase at Co Brown, you're looking at, call it 100 students in Concord, 2,000 is a $200,000 increase there. You look at what Co Brown is, call it another 100 kids, another $4,000. It's a 400,000, a $600,000 increase. We're looking at a 75, in today's math, about 75 cents per thousand per, for every, for every homeowner. So if you've got a 600, I don't know what the average says value of houses in town, but let's just say it's 500K right now, which is probably fair. You're looking at a $375 per year tax increase. That may be palatable to some people. It may not be palatable to some people. We don't necessarily.
Yeah, I, I get that on the numbers.
Right, but we also don't know, like, so to say that everybody wants one school or another school, we don't know what school everybody wants.
But you have a concern that people are gonna flee Concord and go somewhere else. Well, I hear that a lot, that, well, what if everybody went to Co Brown? Well, why would that happen? That's probably not going to happen.
I, I have a, I have a concern that without safeguards, the mechanism can be manipulated. That's my own personal concern.
I also think in terms of like budgeting, we would have to assume, we'd have to budget for everyone going to the most expensive option, right? So even.
And pass that budget.
And pass that budget. So you know, people might not all go to Co Brown, but I would say if that was one of these schools that we were, you know, had a choice model, or we would have to budget for that one if it's the most expensive.
And maybe everybody want, I, I understand, I get it. Like we've been through all these conversations. To me, the only point I wanna make is that let's be cognizant of if we give people choice, they're gonna choose a different school. That says something very powerful to you. Now, whether you wanna act on it or not is another matter. Whether the cost outweighs is another matter. But that has to be, you know, acknowledged in, in what we're, in what we're doing.
I certainly think we've, we've acknowledged it. But when you try to figure out the execution and the logistics and how it plays out long-term, it becomes a much more difficult item. And there is abundance of risk that potentially comes in that moment.
And what clouds it is we've also talked about the fact that younger parents, their perspective shifts as they experience Concord. That is also well-supported by the data that we get back from multiple surveys, including the one from Human Age that we paid for to get as much response as possible. Parents who have been through or kids who've been through Concord have a much more positive response and opinion of it than younger parents who are having, sheltering younger kids and have a hard time filtering them out of the town.
This discussion isn't unique to Deerfield, but we are in the minority for the communities that have to deal with this. Because if you live in Rochester, where do you go to high school? Spalding. If you live in Manchester and one half, you go here, or one third, you go here, one third, you go here, one third, you go here. If you live in Pembroke, where do you go to high school? Pembroke Academy and a number of other towns for that matter. So, you know, Concord is our high school. It has been for 20 years. It is our per, you know, the way that New Hampshire writes the legislation, that is our school.
School maintained by the town of Deer.
That is the school maintained by the town of Deer. And it's at a minimum for another year. But for most of the state, you go to the school in the town you live in. One of the towns that has adopted this very broad school choice model that, that, that we, you know, what's being proposed by some people in the community is modeling it after his account is Croydon. And if you see what potentially happened a year ago in Croydon, town meeting, at the school district meeting ironically enough, public education was temporarily decimated in that community. Somebody went in and made a motion and said, we're gonna pay $4,000 a year per kid. I don't remember the exact numbers. Walked out of the room and basically threw a hand grenade in the room, walked off.
Well, that's why you shouldn't go to town meeting, isn't it, instead of SB2?
It's a decision for the community to make, right?
But don't advocate for SB2.
And that is 100% a peril of town meeting. However, there was a mechanism there for the town to correct it and the town did correct it. But they decimated, but they undid public education in an entire community. Small community, but they undid public education because there's no safeguards in the model that they adopted. And there's no safeguards for the kids, there's no safeguards for the families. They basically just walked in and said, $4,000, sounds like a good number. That's the rate we're gonna pay or whatever. Now, I don't have the exact numbers, please don't quote me on the exact number. But they came in, they threw the hand grenade and they walked out of the room. And if the community hadn't been able to fix that, we'd still be watching Croydon lawsuits today. They'd be embroiled. But there's no safe, there was no safeguards.
Yeah, but that, that, that's a function of the town meeting and the fact that you had, what, how many people were in the room?
Not enough, 10, 15, whatever it was.
So then don't vote for SB2 because that's a disaster. I mean, for a town meeting, because that is a disaster. That would not happen in an SB2 setting.
What potentially happens in that SB2 setting is you can't, you don't get a budget to pass. And so you, you end up with a, you end up with a circuit, it happens slower in SB2. Because what happens in SB2 is you need $2.5 million to pay for high school. Your budget passes on default because it's not contractual, it doesn't increase. You have $2 million from the year before. That $500,000 that you now owe up to your area of high schools becomes a liability for the elementary school. It's the K through A part of the school that has to pay that bill. And the only way you pay that bill at an elementary school is effectively through staffing. There's, there's not a whole lot of other place because you, you can impact special education. Those services will be provided. So what happens? Staffing or high school transportation. And then you have to start looking at IAs because you have to provide a minimum, a certain minimum level of education. So what happens? Is it music? Is it art? Is it, and I'm not trying, this isn't a scare tactic, but this is just a reality of the way that our government and our political system works.
I understand. I, I mean, to that effect, I think town meeting is much worse because you get far fewer people voting on something. So you could have something insane like what happened in Croydon, happened at the town meeting. That is more than likely not ever going to happen under SB2. In addition to which, you know, I mean, if we look at why, kind of the cost of everything, it does, the school renovation budget and plan kinda does fly in the face of everything you're saying about how focused you are on cost now. Because that was clearly such a huge project that, you know, in terms of cost and the effect on the cost, the effect on the taxpayer versus what choice will cost. Very different things. Not to say that DCS doesn't need work. I agree. I don't think it needed a community center, another conversation anyway. But those two things to me don't really jive.
To that point, it's, that doubled down on our feedback feedback from the town because we get zero, very, very little feedback from the town. We get normally three or four people that show up to school meetings. And that's what we get. And so that data point told us very clearly that, then yes, that was a very expensive project and X, Y, or Z, but the town said, no, as loud as they possibly could. So when we have one data point saying we don't support school choice at additional cost, okay. And we get a second data point that says, we do not want it. And maybe it was just way too much money, maybe a lower amount. But that's the type of data points that we have to then try to distill down to the next decision. So I understand why it can be confusing saying, oh, they supported a $45 million project, but now they won't support $4,000 more per student per year for this. Why? And the answer to that is that we had those two data points that very loudly said, and this town specifically aware.
I think, you know, we looked at that school project. We, like tonight, we had as much conversation, we had community feedback. We showed multiple sets of plans to the community and they wholeheartedly said, we really like what that set of plans is. And that was a very well-attended meeting, maybe 100, 150 people were for that one.
You're counting twice.
No. No, 100, 100?
But we didn't know the cost, when we were voting.
Right, but, and we didn't know the cost, because we had to, we had to start with something to get a cost developed in everything else. And we listened, the, the people that took the time to come to that meeting said to us, you know, we like that idea. Okay, we pursued it, they voted it down, that's okay, we gave them the choice, it's democracy, they said, no, the majority rules, off we go. But, you know, to Jeff's point, yes, very strongly, we kind of have understand that there is fiscal constraints and concerns the people in this community are worried about, and we're trying to be cognizant of that.
Okay. Um, the data that we're talking about for Concord that Ed brought up. Though, the numbers are really scary as parents looking at, at those, as he said. I have delved into that data, and if you go back to, like, there's a higher, one of the things I think you're talking about is the percent of students reporting. So if you go back prior to 2022, in 2018, you'll see that Co Brown had actually a higher percentage of students reporting than Concord did, so that would not have been a factor there. In addition to which, the percent of students at Co Brown with IEPs is higher than the percent of students with IEPs at Concord.
That's.
That, that's the data that I.
Concord runs at about 20%, Co Brown runs just under 10.
Okay, the date, so if, in the assessment data that was reported on the Department of Education's website, they have the number of students that have an IEP. And that's broken out with numbers of students, and if you do the fraction out of the entire students' reporting at this, in that data, it was a higher percentage for Co Brown than for Concord. I'll send you whatever.
Yeah, I'd be curious to see, because I checked a couple of weeks ago, and Co Brown effectively has half the population of, actually a little less than half of the population, percentage wise of the students are on an IEP. And there's a lot of nuance to that as well, but there's a significantly lower special education population at Co Brown. Why that anomaly occurs when sending districts seem to fall below state average, I don't know. But they have a significantly lower problem of students on IEPs.
Okay, I looked at the 11th grade assessment data on the website for 2018. Okay, I'll look it again and send it to you, that is what I saw when I did that, maybe my math is wrong. The approved school, and the only way to get out of the contract is by Concord losing its status as an approved school. And then you're still being required to stay in that contract for three years. You have to give them two years to correct it, and then you can't get out until the following year, is not great. In my opinion, just, this is just feedback on the contract, so. And then the only other thing I would say is that in terms of opportunity, and whether families can afford to take advantage of that opportunity, it's not a reason to not open up opportunity. So I would never deny everyone, because some, or a good portion couldn't utilize that opportunity. Is that fair? You know, then we wouldn't have private schools, right? If, if that was fair, and you wouldn't be driving the car that you're driving versus the car that I'm driving. But what is fair at the end of the day? If you have upper, if you have 60% of the town that could take advantage of choosing a school for their child, if given a top off agreement, which I know you don't agree with, but why would you choose to not allow them opportunity, just because someone else could not afford that piece of opportunity? That doesn't make sense to me. Providing the most opportunity that you can makes more sense than denying any opportunity to anyone. That's, that's just me. Thank you, I appreciate it, Jeff, congratulations.
Thank you.
Couldn't that be your lawsuit?
I'm having another meeting just to drag Jeff out.
Couldn't that possibly be your lawsuit?
That is, that is the circumstance.
I'm just thinking, because.
Can I just tell a law?
No, no. I don't want to get in an argument.
We've been great all night.
This is my comment.
Pointed at me.
Yep, is that, I am one of those children, and I said it at the deliberative session, if, and I went to a great school system, I was lucky, but if I was in a situation where my classmates had a choice of A, B, and C, and C was the school where my mother knew I would thrive. She knew it was the one for me, because my mother knew me, right? And the parent's supposed to make that choice, and school C cost for my mother, it could have been as little as $100 more. I would not have been able to go to that school, even though that was the school that was best for me. That could be where a lawsuit could come, because I did not have access to the same opportunity as my classmates.
As your peers.
As my peers. And I'm not saying it could, you know, you're saying there's no lie, I understand that. But when you say you've got to look at what might happen as well, that could very well be what could happen. And again, you want the kids to be able to go to the best school for them. That creates to me an unfair opportunity, and could we have a fund to maybe help offset some of that cause? I'm not even sure legally how that could go, and how you could even decide who accesses that fund. And then, again, that's putting the family out there saying, you got to prove to me that you're that poor, that you can't send your child there. So I think it, it just, I used to think they were great, I used to think, yeah, that will solve a lot of problems. But then I looked at my own family situation, and that would not have worked for my family, and it wouldn't have been fair.
So really quick, I, I was that kid too. I was homeless, lived in a car, I get you. But that's the board's opportunity, that I feel like you, you can do this. There is a way, right? Top off is great, it's legally, there's no law, but I get you, like, 100%. I hope that, that no parent ever says what you just said, like, she would thrive better in that school, and she would have more. And because a school board is saying, this is the one, I don't care how much you'll suffer, you'll be fine in the end. Like, it breaks my heart, if your parent says, I know she'll do better and I can't afford $100, the board can do better.
But.
Right, you just.
Guys, guys, sorry, please, please.
We can do this, you can do this, somebody can, we, like.
If the taxpayers aren't paying for it.
That's ultimately, the, the end decision is, is to the tax, if the taxpayers want to oblige themselves to that. Because that's, that's, the solution is, is the additional burden placed on the taxpayers. And how it's structured would be determined in the event that Article 4 fails. But at this point, absent Article 4 failing, that is the current proposed path. This elected group of people, granted Kendra was appointed, but we had made the decision as elected people prior to Kendra's appointment. So that she doesn't get hung out to dry on this. But that is the path, right? That this board, with all the data and all of the information, reviewing every bit of information and spending years thinking about it, waking up in the middle of the night trying to find solutions. This is the path that we're presenting today. And if Article 4 passes, then, then it validates what we felt. If Article 4 fails, then it's the director from the community to go back and find another solution. But we don't know what that is until after the ballot, the vote and march.
I have one quick question, and I'm done. When you, when you amended the petition warrant article to be public school, it's, it's advisory anyway, but it is, it is on, Co Brown is a public academy. If, and maybe you don't have the answer to this, because you haven't even talked about it, but if warrant article 4 fails, but the petition one does a little bit better, are you crossing out Co Brown completely, because it's not a public school, it's a public academy? Are you like, you're just.
I don't think the board can really answer that, I think individually as board members we can answer. I would not cross out Co Brown as an option. I would say, I would support a public school or a public academy, and that is what I would look at.
To that extent, the legislative body added words public, right? So the legislative body present in the room added the words public. That was after other attempts to amend the article failed, okay? There was debate, there was discussion, that is the legislative process. Adding, the legislative body adding the word public is an indication that there is a concern about the St. Pauls and the dairy fields, and all of those other organizations. The legislative body could have added public academy.
No, but it was over, it was too late.
It wasn't too late.
Advisory, I was like, sit down.
But it's still gonna be added.
It's not over until it's over, but the legislative body could have amended it to that point, so, you know.
Yeah.
But, but the, the intent of the amendment, when I made it, was to limit the potential exposure for the community to be, I pulled the, I pulled the tuition rates for all the private schools in New Hampshire, and they range from a very small amount to
Oh, yeah.
a substantially significant amount, 70, I think the highest was like 70.
That looked like emotion.
It was like 70, 20, it was like $71,000, there was a list below. And I looked at it, because I saw something on the Facebook that showed all the low numbers, but not the rest of the numbers. So the rest of the numbers are 35, 40, 41, 45, 50, 60, 70. And I have a concern, because I am smart enough to know that if I wanted to send my child to a private school, and there was a community in the state of New Hampshire that was gonna foot the bill for it, I would go buy the cheapest little shack in that town, declare residency, get a free ride, and sell that shack four years later. And if I'm smart enough to think of it, there's plenty of other people that are smart enough to think of it. So my intentions with the motion was to limit the exposure to the taxpayers. Because I don't want to be the guy footing the bill for all these people to move into town, buy a shack, declare residency for four years and roll back out, and now where you want to talk about taxing back, throw a couple of $60,000 bills at me. So, but the legislative body could have added public academy.
I thought that that's very good.
All right, is there anything else regarding this topic? I think we had a very great conversation, to be honest with everybody.
Can I just comment quick?
Yeah.
I just, I'm sorry, I should have stated this before. I understand the decision's been made, being here is not making that change on Article 4, I understand that completely. Why I spoke, what I spoke is, if that fails, I want to be progressive on giving you opinions now, because you're gonna have to reconsider. So just to state that clearly.
Absolutely understand that, and for the people in this room that have attended meetings, I have never stopped somebody from telling me how much of an ass I was. And during COVID, it happened a lot. So by all means, we want the feedback, we'll take it any way we get it. And, and I certainly respect everybody's position, and I understand this is a passionate topic for a lot of people. And I, I am empathetic to that, and I hope that everybody that is here, and anybody that, I don't even know if anybody's tuned in or not, but. So people are watching, they have a better understanding of the reasonings why the board made the decisions it made with what I believe to be, you know, a very accurate representation of our decision-making process. So, you know, and by all means, if there's people watching, or other people, if you have questions, just ask us. Every one of us is always willing and able and available to discuss it. I'll also tell you that you probably will have a hard time finding any of the board members on Facebook, because we all hate it. Well.
Excuse you.
But the rest of us basically don't use it, so, you know, we're easily accessible, there isn't a person in this town that can't get ahold of us.
And we have a Facebook page now.
And we have a Facebook page now, so.
Though you can't message us up there, you still have to find us out.
So, but by all means, you know, this is the discussion that's good for the community, this is the positive discussion. So I appreciate everybody taking the time, we had probably a two hours worth of conversation on that.
Are you including the deliberative session?
The deliberative session is, is, I mean, that's self-governance, doesn't, it's great. I mean, we don't have to agree, but at least everybody that's there is informed, right? And they're, they're, they're basically, they're, they're having an informed decision-making discussion. So I hope that creates a little bit more understanding of, of where the board's perspective is on this matter, and like I said, anybody watching, anybody else, if you have questions, just please ask us. There isn't one of us that isn't willing to take the time to talk to anybody in town. With that, I guess we're gonna, we're gonna let that one go to bed, and recap, the next item is recap, I think we'll, we'll rip through the rest of the stuff pretty quick. Recap of deliberative session. Not a whole lot changed really, I mean, slightly to the budget. Took the, took the bus out, obviously there's discussion around that, I think during deliberative, we really kind of explained the justification for that. It's a matter of budgeting for 10 buses versus nine. We only have seven right now.
Six and a half.
Six and a half, sorry. So, you know, the board is, has incredibly confident that they will not find us.
10.
10 buses, for the drivers for 10 buses. So, again, we're really trying to make every effort to put forward a budget that's gonna be as accurate as possible so that the community will hopefully get in support. Anything else from deliberative that anybody else wanted to kind of comment on? I agree, we beat that horse over the last two hours. Everybody?
Good teacher contract.
It's a good teacher contract, it's a fair teacher contract, and it sounded like a deliberative session, that was the sentiment of the room, obviously you gotta let everybody else weigh in as well. Hopefully, hopefully the community feels the same way. School calendar?
Yes.
Some most exciting time of the year?
The school calendar is virtually the same as it was last year, and we, when we drafted it, we used last year's calendar to draft it, sent it along to Brian, Brian met the DEA reps like we always do, and there were no changes proposed last I knew, right, Brian?
Great. Good, are we approving this tonight, or are we doing this tonight?
Unless, it's pretty, there's no surprises, so unless you have issue with anything, it would be great to have it approved, so we can get a vote.
I think that, I may have asked this question last year. But there is a wonky, like, Friday, we have like a vacation, and we have a Friday, Monday, and I can't remember what it is, but I got bombarded with like texts, like, why? Is this weird?
That's Labor Day weekend.
Is it Labor Day?
Is it Labor Day?
Yeah. Because we have two, we have two teacher professional days, and then school's in for two days, and then you have a long weekend for Labor Day.
So I'm gonna ask the one question that as a parent, I think, every year, why don't we just start after Labor Day?
Pembroke is starting after Labor Day for the first time, and I don't even know how long.
I'm gonna, I'm just gonna do it, I'm gonna do it. What is the consequence of us starting after Labor Day? What's that, what the last day is? Potentially.
Two days.
In 19.
So last day is a Monday?
Somebody talked me out of, somebody talked me out of that.
I fully support it, I think it makes sense.
Jeff, do you want to make one last motion?
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we move the first day of school to September 4th.
We're gonna have the Labor.
Labor Day is on the.
Oh, the 5th.
Is there public opinion in the room?
Yeah, like the easy start.
You like the soft start?
Soft start for the kids.
We have a supporter of the soft start.
Have a couple days, come back. Did you want to talk to your administration about how they feel?
All right, let's do this, because can we table, can, can we ask the administration to give us the why or the why not for starting after Labor Day and pick this up next week?
That wasn't, that wasn't even a discussion with the DEA. It, it was never even, like, I don't think we've ever done it, so it was never even.
Yeah, we proposed the same, basically the same contract that we have, calendar that we have launched.
So that would, that would, like, we just never, New Hampshire doesn't do that.
The only.
I mean, where I'm from, you don't start before Labor Day.
The only reason that we, that Pembroke chose to do it is that they negotiated this year.
I just want to be like Pembroke.
I'm not gonna comment. We negotiated, the teachers negotiated four days to, to the start of school.
They did?
Yeah, so the PD days took up the four, first four days, and that's the only reason they did it.
Are you telling us now?
I'm not, I'm telling you why a district did it.
What's the board's thought on this?
Move the table.
The whole thing?
You didn't get a second. You didn't get a second, so.
Are you screwing up your last motion?
I don't care.
Is there an issue waiting? It's gonna be another month. Or do you guys have anything urgent that you need to get the calendar out for?
No.
I would love to.
I'd be more happy to go back to the DEA and ask them if they would.
I would, I would, I would like feedback from DEA on their thoughts. And if the DEA is agreeable to it, I would maybe just throw something in the bridge to ask parents for, for that.
Or the Facebook group. Do a super simple survey, Mrs. Witty.
Thank you. Fifty percent. Yes, fifty percent.
Fifty-one forty-nine.
Agreeable to all of us?
I would, I would keep this.
Would you?
But if I get out voted as.
I'm, listen, I'm not, this is, I've died on a lot of hills. This isn't one of them I'm dying on.
It's a, it is a nice ease into the new school year, but.
Yeah, so the September one, I was.
Candies.
You have September twenty-ninth off.
Yep.
The following Friday.
That's the fair.
Professional development day. Then we have that Monday off.
That's a weird weekend.
Did we also have the Monday off after?
We don't have, we don't have the Monday off.
No, I'm sorry, that's the week after.
That's Columbus Day weekend.
It's Columbus. That's a weird weekend because we have a professional day with Columbus Day. That's.
Right, because, yes, and that's always that way because the NEA New Hampshire PD day is that day.
Okay.
And then it, they always have it the Friday before.
I'll move, I'll move the schedule as presented. Second. I told you I'm not dying on a hill.
So we're not talking.
I'm not dying on a hill. Well, I might be. We'll see what the rest of the board wants to do. Any additional discussion?
Does someone second?
Nate second. Additional discussion? Roll call, Jeff? No. Kendra? Or maybe it's spicy.
I have, I just said no.
Jeff said no.
I think I'm gonna abstain. I don't.
No, I mean, I can't tell you, but I mean, I feel like that it should be a yes or no.
But he's like, I know you.
Remember what happened?
More discussions before we.
Yes, I would love more discussion. I don't, okay, so I don't have a child in the school, so I don't understand other perspectives about starting slowly or starting after. Please.
Look what I did. We have five.
We have five buildings now.
Why is this the proposal?
Well, I think we've done it because it's, it's appreciated and it works, correct? Right? There was no reason to. Have, have there, has there been outcry in prior years about starting before Labor Day?
I spent six years or five years killing half-teens. Sometimes, sometimes things die.
The DEA reps have always pushed for a later start. So that's why originally when I went to, my concern was Monday, the last day, my proposal was to start on the Monday, the twenty-eighth, and having a four-day week with the two PD days prior, similar to what we did this year. We started school, PD days were on the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, and we had the weekend, and we came back this year into a four-day week. They had pushed back and said, no, we want to stay, we want to start as late as possible. So to say that they wouldn't start after Labor Day if given the opportunity, it might take that up.
Probably the first couple of days of getting started after, you know, after a summer is not super productive from a primary school, middle school perspective or high school perspective. And so how do you fill that time?
You're gonna get the labor start.
Getting, you know, getting started. And so to set those couple of days off, as, as we call it, soft start or rolling start or something, it's kind of like a low-stake sort of like, let's get used to school again. And then when they come back from a long weekend, now we're actually gonna start being productive. And I, that's how my school works, and I appreciate that kind of a start so that when I actually, when they get started, my students are with me.
So what's you, Andy, are you still there?
Yeah, I'm in the box.
What do you think, Andy?
I'm kind of erring on Brian's side, having gone through the teacher negotiations.
Okay.
What's Brian's side?
So do we want to, as a board, just let Brian have a discussion with the DEA, get their feedback and go from there? What do you want to?
It's gonna be a month, and then it's gonna be a new board making this decision.
It is.
I'm ready to go with it.
If we were to vote, so we have a motion second on the table. Let's vote. If it fails and it goes back to, we'll let Brian talk to the DEA. If it passes, it passes and it's dead, done. Jeff?
No.
Kendra?
No.
Andy?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes.
All right, schedule's done, yes. All right. Well, that was fun. All right, we have two invoices from STA. This is for January transportation, but for a motion to approve the elementary transportation amount of twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents. Discussion. Roll call, Andy?
Aye, yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Kendra?
Yes.
Nate? Yes, Nate, yeah. All right. I have an invoice for fifteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty cents. This is transportation for high school, for motion to approve. Will be seconded. Andy?
Yes, aye.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, myself, Nate?
Yes.
All right, I'll take care of those two. We have a staff request for
Child gearing.
Child gearing.
If you want to talk about it, it has to be.
We want to talk about it. This is for child gearing leave. Or are we happy moving to approve, moving to approve?
Second.
Any discussion, we can have discussion. So, Andy?
Aye, yes.
Okay, Jeff?
Yes.
Kendra?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Nate?
Yes.
Okay. So leave us with, that wraps us up?
That wraps you up.
That wraps us up. So we have, we have citizens' comments?
Yes, you do.
Citizens' comments. Do we beat that horse to death? We did. All right, so look for a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Jeff and Andy, for the last three years. It's been appreciated and a pleasure working with you both on the committee. I don't know what you're gonna do with your Wednesday nights, but make sure it's fine. All the favor.
Aye.
All right.
Roll call, aye.
All right.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.